Welcome everybody to the, oh, thank you. Welcome everybody to the Tuesday, January 16th, 2024 School Committee Meeting. Would you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty as our first and all.
Some of you might notice that the PAC 105 is not here tonight. I know it was on the agenda, but we decided that another night might be better for them to come, so maybe on the 30th, and Allison will arrange that. Can you hear me? Let me move this closer to me. How's this? This is better? Okay, perfect. Okay, so I'm just gonna go over a few rules. If you'd like to speak, please make sure that you've signed in with Natalie. And we have some blank sheets on either end, I believe, if you want to sign in to speak. Otherwise, and there's still time to do so, if you wanted to do that. I'm quite sure most of you here regarding the upcoming policy change discussion, but I plan to have a public comment about potential change agenda, excuse me. I wrote down some notes because I'm not the best public speaker, as some may have noticed if they listened to the Policy Subcommittee meeting, where I said you know about 100 times. But, all right, let me start over. I'm quite sure most of you are here regarding the upcoming policy change discussion. I plan to have public comment about that policy change agenda item when we get there on the agenda. However, if you have a general comment that has nothing to do with tonight's agenda, you are welcome to come during the public comment portion of our meeting, which is first on the agenda. If you begin to speak on the upcoming policy change discussion, I'll interrupt you and ask you to come back at the appropriate time. This is just strictly for general comments that aren't on the agenda tonight. Is anybody here for any of that? I can't imagine why you'd want, but. All right, so the format is as follows. We're gonna go through the agenda items one at a time. When we get to agenda item number nine, I'll ask each committee member to speak to the agenda item, calling on members one at a time. Then I'm going to ask our student rep Lauren if she'd like to weigh in, so she's decide when the time comes. After every committee member has a chance to speak, I'll move to the Pembroke citizens and stakeholders in the audience. I'll start with the students, then with the parents of students and staff, then with residents, and then with out-of-town guests. Each person will have two minutes to speak. Let's try to stay within the two minutes so that everyone who would like to speak will actually have the time to do so. The comment section of this meeting will last 90 minutes. I'm going to ask the students who wish to speak to come first, and then I'm gonna move to parents. Any negative comments about any staff member or teacher will result in the person being shut down for comments. If it continues, or if there are any negative or disruptive outbursts from any audience member, the person will be asked to leave immediately. Please only comment if you have a new comment or idea to share. If we start to get a series of repetitive comments, I will, you know, try to shut down the comments and go directly to deliberations. I don't want this to happen because it's really important for everyone here who would like to speak to have a chance to do so. So, with that, so, welcome to all the visitors. I already explained the adjustment to the agenda, and I'm gonna move to Erin to talk about communications.
Sure, so, under communications, we do have, just to open up the conversation regarding the potential nine C cuts associated with the FY24 budget. I'm not sure that you all want to delve deep into that topic of conversation on this evening, but I did want to put it on there because I know we do have a joint budget subcommittee meeting tomorrow with the two members of the select board, and we intend to discuss it there. I think Patrick and Sue are more than happy to kind of bring back those thoughts to the next meeting that we go through tomorrow night with that joint subcommittee, so I think it might make more sense to kind of do it in that order.
Yep, perfect. And so, unless, if anybody has any questions, Allison, Mike, Patrick?
No.
All right, perfect. So, the warrants are being distributed. So, do we have a, you've been given the meeting minutes of January 2nd, 2024. Is there a motion?
I just have one quick edit. It says, on the second page, it says maps, it should be mats, wrestling mats, not math.
On page two?
Yes.
Okay.
First paragraph. Otherwise, I may give.
Move your mic close to you.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the minutes from last, as amended.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Okay, so now we're gonna go to a discussion regarding the need to create a new policy regarding political social advocacy in the classroom. So, I'm gonna start this off by talking to everyone about, you know, the reason why this came about, so. But I want to first address, you know, recent social media posts have, in my opinion, mischaracterized what's tonight's discussion is about for those who didn't listen to the Policy Subcommittee or look at the policy ideas. Maybe you relied on a headline and a summary in the social media post instead of investigating for yourself. Maybe you're showing up here tonight angry at what you feel is someone reprehensible and in a position to make changes that will negatively affect the kids. I can understand why you're angry, but please understand a few things. First, this is a discussion only about whether we should change the policy, and if so, how should it be changed? I've outlined some ideas that I believe could work, but they are in draft format. I'm coming to my fellow school committee members for input based on parent and student input from the last three years since I've been on the committee. I'm not suggesting an overall ban on pride flags, and I think most of you will be happy to know that. I am not suggesting a ban on what students should be able to wear, flags, pins, T-shirts, or otherwise. In fact, my suggestions in the draft that I presented at Policy Subcommittee allow for students to be able to hang flags associated with their clubs in common areas in the school. Students would not be prohibited from advocacy, and that's really important for people to understand. I am not anti-LGBTQ+. I want to be clear. I have members of the LGBTQ+ community in my very own family who I love dearly. I would never advocate for something that would make them feel less valued. My goal is to have a safe and supportive classroom for all students. This policy change suggestion is coming from a place of love for our students, not hate. Many of you are my neighbors and friends and know me personally. Hopefully, you know that I would fight for kindness and understanding for everyone, regardless of race, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, any protected class, and for those who are not in a protected class. I love and care about all of your kids, and that's why I serve on this committee. It's important to note also that our teachers and administrators are in a position of authority over our students. When they give a directive to students, it's taken very seriously, and rightfully so. We shouldn't be misusing this authority with ideology directives. Teachers should be helping to teach the students how to think and not what to think. Many of you emailed with the question, "Why do you feel this policy needs to change?" I feel that many teachers are advocating for their cause in the classroom by displaying posters and flags for their cause, including Coexist, Black Lives Matter, Don't Tread on Me, and others. One of the areas I've had the most complaints is from awareness days. I've had a few complaints from parents who are uncomfortable with staff handing out pins, buttons, or stickers to students to advocate for a specific cause. Students during various high school awareness days were pressured by well-meaning teachers and staff to wear pins, buttons, and certain colored shirts to show support for the cause. Teachers and staff also wore said pins and shirt colors. Parents tried to have conversations with teachers and administrators and were made to feel judged for even questioning it. One student asked to stay home from school because he didn't want to feel shame for not wearing the color pink, and it was simply because he didn't own the color pink. He thought his teachers and peers would be judging him. I've heard from several people that their students felt uncomfortable with various political symbols in the classroom. Some people who happened to be in religious groups felt that the teacher was judging their work based on them having a different viewpoint than the teacher. The reason this became more about what seems like LGBTQ+ causes is because the examples I was given from parents and students with teachers were mostly around teacher advocacy for LGBTQ+ that infringed on the students' rights. I am not going into too much detail about these situations because I feel there's too much identifying information. However, it applies to so many other social issues where there's a controversial topic at play. There absolutely has been other examples of inappropriate advocacy in the classroom. I believe that no student should ever know how their teacher feels about any political or controversial issue. Teachers should be neutral and be able to present all sides of an issue, not just the side they agree with. We are coming up on a presidential election year, and there's gonna be a lot of political and social issues, new ones, that we haven't even thought of, and a lot of emotions around these issues. We need to put boundaries in place to be sure that these views don't bleed into the classroom. It's important to note that we already have a policy on political and controversial issues in the classroom. If you'd like to look it up, it's Policy IMB, and currently on our site as 4.41, but being re-coded and hasn't made it to our site yet. It says the following, and this is under Teacher-Planned Classroom Discussions. Controversial issues selected by teachers for classroom discussion must relate directly to the content and objectives of courses that have been approved by the school committee. Two, the teacher's right to introduce controversial issues in the classroom does not include the right of advocacy. Teachers are to refrain from using their position to express partisan points of view. The approach to discussions must be objective and scholarly, and teachers must ensure that the reasoned arguments of all sides of an issue are given equal presentation and emphasis in the discussion. Students should be prepared and follow-up activities which are appropriate to the presentation should be provided. That's the policy. Also, the Supreme Court in Garcetti versus Sabalos in 2006 ruled that public employees do have, do not have a First Amendment protection for speech issued as part of their official duties. When a teacher or administrator takes this job, it's clear that personal politics have no place in the classroom or anywhere in the building. You are paid by taxpayer dollars who may have varying social or political viewpoints. You are required to be neutral. Although we already have a policy on this, it's become clear that teachers and administrators don't believe that this is a political or controversial issue. So, that's why I hope to tighten up this policy so that it is clear. It has been argued that Policy IMB is specifically about instruction, but I would argue that anything that is on the classroom while as part of a teacher's instruction and encompassed by this policy. If there's disagreement about this, then we need to change the policy so that it's crystal clear to everyone as to what's appropriate in the classroom. Although we've always had a policy about politics and advocacy in the classroom, we've adopted a laissez-faire attitude about policing such items in the classroom for fear of offending anyone in recent years. As a result, teachers and admin feel that they can and should advocate for certain marginalized groups so that they don't appear complacent. We need to make that boundary very clear. Those who would like to keep politics and social issues in the classroom are those who champion the idea of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I've heard it shouted from the rooftops that we need to be more diverse and champion the causes of marginalized groups. But these same people have decided to take an ethnocentric stance and only allow diversity of thought if it aligns with their views of what diversity is. We need, we should understand that we have a community of various religions, including Jewish people, who have traditionally been marginalized throughout history. They have a recent history of atrocities to their people, concentration camps, attempts of genocide, and religion is a federally protected class. However, religious texts of Jewish people are in direct conflict with the ideals presented in LGBTQ+ flags. I'm sorry, if you're gonna, I'm sorry, if you're going to. There's lots of his. If you, if you have another outburst, I'm gonna ask you to leave. So, I'm just letting you know right now, you can't have an outburst. I'm giving you one more second. All right, so I'm just gonna say that there are varying levels of being Jewish, and some people are more religious than others, and I'm just gonna leave it at that. Absolutely. All right, whatever. All right, I'm gonna move on. I didn't mean that to offend anybody, so. All right, let me move on. My apologies to the Jewish community if I've offended you. I don't believe that giving extra privileges.
All right, hold on, just hold on. This is gonna be a tough debate, it's gonna be a difficult debate, but it's going to be a civil debate. I understand that there are going to be things that are set around this table that are going to be really difficult for some folks to hear and that you diametrically are opposed to. Yeah, again, surprised, but no problem. All right, here's the deal. We're talking about a policy that is dealing with red-hot lightning rod issues, and we're talking about neutrality, we're talking about fairness. Many of you are going to get up and talk about a whole series of things, including inclusiveness. So what I need all of us tonight to display is a reasonable, open-minded want to hear all sides of this debate, number one. Two, I want you to pretend that your children are in this room, and I want you to think about how you react. That includes everyone at this table as we're in the debate. Let Sue finish, and then we're going to keep going around. I really do, I know it's hard, but I do appreciate it. Sue, can you continue?
Thank you. I don't believe that giving extra privileges to any one group is the solution, whether it's Blue Lives Matter, Thin Blue Line, Don't Tread on Me, the Cois. it's Blue Lives Matter, Thin Blue Line, Don't Tread On Me, the Coexist symbol, Black Lives Matter, or otherwise. When we give this extra boost, we are causing division and anger toward the very group that we supposedly want to protect. I recently took a tour of all five buildings, and some of the symbols and flags seen in classrooms at every school include the Coexist and Black Lives Matter and Peace Flag and Pride Flag and Don't Tread On Me. These symbols and flags have been in our classrooms for at least three or four years. Some years worse than others with these symbols. I believe there's a place for all of these symbols, but just not in the public school classroom. This policy has never been about taking away the opportunity for students to be advocates for their causes, whether Black Lives Matter, Pride, or otherwise. I want you to know that I've read every single email that was sent to the school committee, no matter how difficult. I tried my best to respond to all of them, but today I fell short. So if you sent an email in the last 15 hours and didn't get a response, I apologize. But please know that the committee has seen every single email. Some of you sent in very respectful letters advocating to keep the status quo or alternate solutions for ensuring a safe and supportive classroom for LGBTQ youth while trying to make it fair for all groups of kids. This is the kind of dialogue that I was hoping for when having this discussion, because although I've written a draft, I know it needs work and creativity to make it something everyone can live with. My hope is that we have a community discussion without becoming divisive and hateful. On the other hand, I have received many hate-filled emails from people calling me homophobic or otherwise. I even received an email from someone who noticed that I left out the letter Q when speaking quickly, and they accused me of being afraid of turning people queer. After a couple of days of these emails, I was honestly shaken. Between the mischaracterized social media posts and the hate-filled emails, I was honestly a bit hurt that people who have known me for a long time could actually think about that about me just because I disagree with the way we are currently handling the situation. And then I thought, if I'm feeling that way, imagine how a student feels. Think about that. So I don't ever want someone in the LGBTQ plus community to feel that way, and I don't want any student to feel that way. It shouldn't be just about one group, it should be about all students feeling comfortable in the classroom, no matter what the teacher's politics are. If I can prevent even one student from feeling this way, it'll be worth it. I absolutely want a safe space for all students, but sometimes when we go a little too far to make it safe for one group, we're going a little too far to make it unsafe for another. Thank you to the parents who are in the LGBTQ plus community or have children in the community who reached out with helpful suggestions to find a solution that might work to include everyone. Thank you for understanding that this comes from a place of love for all students. So with that said, I would like to turn the mic to Allison.
Can I just clarify one piece?
Yes.
I know in your remarks you said you're talking...
Allison, Mike. Test.
Can I take yours? Okay. Try this again. Our responsibility revolves around the children. They observe and take note the way adults conduct themselves. The words we use matter. I have been feeling the weight of this for days and weeks now, if not for months, really. It hurts me more than I have words for. I feel it deep inside my soul. I keep my head up. I know I'll be on the right side of history on this. After I was elected in May, one of the first conversations, if not the first conversation I had with you, Sue, was about how my focus now shifted to the best interests of the town of Pembroke, including the financial best interests of town. This is not that. We are opening ourselves up to civil rights and workplace lawsuits. The town and schools are already in a nearly impossible financial position. Our pockets are empty. We can't afford lawsuits. Who is going to want to move their family here? Housing values will be affected. What will it look like tomorrow when someone Googles Pembroke, Massachusetts? Our town is going to need to raise taxes to pay for all the legal battles this policy and discussion could bring. It makes no sense to push this policy forward. When I spoke to our school attorney yesterday, he also confirmed your policy draft puts the school at high risk from civil rights violations for students as well as civil and workplace rights for the teachers from the Massachusetts Attorney General. The ACLU has given a legal opinion. We have to end this tonight. Now, I know not to believe everything I read on the internet, but a claim was made today that your policy was legally vetted. I ask you, by who and when, and why that wasn't shared with the policy subcommittee or the rest of the committee? Did you discuss that legal opinion with our school attorney? I love our schools and our town. My family has lived in Pembroke for over 50 years. My husband and I started our family in another state. We decided to move our family here to Pembroke almost four years ago. It breaks my heart to think of what this policy and discussion is doing to our students. Parents and staff, this is so damaging. I hope I am wrong, but our schools will not look the same way as they do today. At our last policy subcommittee meeting, there was a lot of discussion about religion being a protected class, which it is. Directly from the EEOC website, religious discrimination involves treating a person unfavorably because of his or her religious beliefs. We, as a school committee, are employers and have to follow the same laws governing EEOC, reasonable accommodations for an employee's religious beliefs or practices, unless doing so would cause more than a minimal burden on the operations of the employer's business. Removing the Pride Flag and other social advocacy or what you deem political does not meet a reasonable accommodation for religious discrimination for students and staff. Additionally, what is being targeted here is the ability of teachers to help students feel safe in the learning environment. Removal of the flag would be detrimental to the learning environment. When students fear they cannot be safe, they will be unable to focus on learning, and their grades could suffer as well as their mental health. LGBTQ plus young people are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. That is from the Trevor Project. How does this policy and discussion make sense? Don't let anyone tell you otherwise. This is about the Pride Flag. No other subject has been so extensively discussed in the past two policy subcommittee meetings regarding this policy other than removing the Pride Flags. We have current policies in place covering controversial and political issues. We have the School Handbook, and we have the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan that lays out procedures to be followed. We have Titan Talk under the Community tab on our website for making reports. I have a lot more to say, but in interest of time, I would like to move on and hear from others, and especially the audience, so look for time to come tonight.
If you could be seated. Thank you. Test? Okay. All right, so Mike, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Here we go. I just want to start by reminding all members of the school committee and everyone here as well that we're elected to represent all the students, not just those that we most agree with or those whose parents are friends of ours. We have to represent everyone. We have to find a way to do stuff that's fair for all students. With that, I was really hoping that the policy sub could meet somewhere in the middle and come to a conclusion that's fair for everyone. I do feel like Sue may be representing a certain class of students, and Allison is representing another class, and I was really hoping that they would have these discussions that they decided to take on and find somewhere in the middle that they could meet that's fair. When I say fair for everyone, that doesn't mean that everyone will be necessarily happy about it. Typically, the best policies are made when there's open discussion, there's some give and take, and there's some negotiations. I don't believe that happened in subcommittee. I think each of you gave in a little bit, but not enough to really cooperate and to find that spot that we need to find. So we also have to balance developing policy with the rights of teachers and staff. They have an extremely difficult job, and we should be thankful that they do it. Lastly, we have a duty to make the best decisions for the town. We have to ask ourselves, will there be unintended consequences to our decisions? What kind of legal or financial exposure could the town face? Would resources used there be better used elsewhere? There's a lot to consider. We don't have the convenience of just going with what we want to do. We have to take all of this into consideration and more. It's not easy having to make a decision while having to take into account all the various stakeholders. I'm looking forward to hearing from the Pembroke community, having an open discussion with my fellow school committee members so we can make the best decision for the town and for the schools right now, and the students and the staff.
Thank you. Patrick?
Thanks, Mike. So I've been doing this for... It is about the happens for our kids in Pembroke. It is about the happens for our families in Pembroke. First and foremost, my decisions are made to support kids. Second, it's about parents. I believe that there is no greater guide to a child than our parents. Parents have rights with their children, and they can argue to the now that they're not those rights are the finish in the school setting in their current scenario. That's part of it. But my belief is that parents have rights to guide their children, to raise their children in that difficult conversation with their children. The next piece that I think about is the classroom. At the end of the day, we employ teachers and we employ administrators to make sure that they are helping, and I stress "helping," to educate our children. They are licensed to do it, they are educated to do it, and we need to trust them to do it. Policy is put in place to ensure there is governance over these things. So I spent a lot of time, talked to a lot of people, talked to a lot of younger people because candidly, it's who I want to hear about in this topic. I first dove into what's legal. There are two cases, both that were decided in the late 60s, that I've confirmed with our legal counsel, are still the prevailing precedent around both of these things. The first is pickering. It allows teachers, and it basically says, and I would grossly dispute the characterization of Garcetti, because pickering is still the law of the land. It says, "Teachers' rights do not end at the doorstep of the school." It also says, however, that there is a test. Teacher cannot say whatever they want. It cannot be grossly without fact. It cannot be grossly without basis. A teacher cannot also advocate for their own financial well-being, their own contract, their unemployment grievance in the classroom or to students. Teachers are restricted in certain areas in the school, in the district, have a right to restrict that. Think of it for the brand, the reputation of the district. Students have more rights. And that was decided in Tinker v. Des Moines in 1969. I think it was about seven months old. You can all see the gray hair. This has been around for a really long time. So long as a student is not wearing or displaying something that is vulgar, that is offensive, and that will grossly detract from the overall learning environment or classroom, they cannot be told that they can't do it. So two cases, and I think what we're talking about in multiple ways fails both of those tests. From a practical nature, I read through the policy, and a couple of things really scared me. So when I look at this, it says, "Students who lead and/or attend after school clubs who would like to exhibit advocacy associated with their club, including social, political, partisan, or religious, administration shall designate approved common areas for such Requests for such displays must be submitted in writing by a student to the principal administrator, administration, and be approved by the school committee." That is not our job. Period end. Not our job. Our job is to create policy. Our job is to approve high-level curriculum. Our job is to provide budget. Our job is to not teach, right? Our job is ultimately to entrust the administrators with what we have employed them to do, and that is to run the schools. Not our job. A file of the written request with the name of the student requesting will be kept by administration. That literally scared the pants off of me, because what it said is, "If you're going to start requesting a bunch of controversial topics, we've got a file on you." And I can tell you right now, there's no kid, especially one that wants to go to Harvard, Princeton, or some major school that wants a file on them. So that scared me. The next thing that worried me is students who wear clothes, jewelry, pins, or flags of a nature that displays their political, partisan, or social policy advocacy, as long as it is not, and by the way, this is the legal precedent, insightful, vulgar, or disruptive to the learning environment. So it sounds fine, but it's about forcing a kid to identify maybe who they may or may not want to be or are on shore, and I'm not okay with that. Staff who would like to wear jewelry or pins that represent a part of their own personal identity or culture, as long as it is not done to advocate for any particular group and does not cause disruption to the learning environment in any way. If I want to wear this tie in June, I cannot. I am a married man with three children. I do not identify as part of the LGBTQ community. According to this policy, I cannot do that, and that is not okay. It is also a direct violation of pickering, so we fail on the legal test. So now I begin to say, do we have a problem, right? So let's say, as Sue said, it's a draft, right? And it is a draft. So do we have a problem for which the school committee needs to adjust the policy? I spent three and a half hours on Martin Luther King Day, came very close to pregame of the Bills game, and if you know me, you know that means I had a commitment to this issue. We walked, we didn't just tour the schools. We walked through every single classroom, every single office, every single conference room. I even went into the copy rooms, okay? I then asked the superintendent, because I know it's going to come up, again, done this too long, can teachers or anyone else come in here and whitewash the walls and make sure that we don't see everything that was in here on Thursday? The answer is, they actually don't have access to the building. So we were seeing the building as it was left on Friday afternoon. There are not Black Lives Matter flags all over the place. There are not Blue Lives Matter flags all over the place. There were a small handful of gay Pride Flags, and I actually learned something. I had no idea that the gay Pride Flag was the one that had the triangle that came down. It wasn't just the rainbow one. It's the one you're waving, okay? There was a handful, and they were mainly at the high school. One of them was in a room of a teacher that taught a social studies course that dealt with civil rights. So it makes sense, it's part of the curriculum. There are a lot of things that were up. However, here's the other thing I saw. There are a lot of Patriot Flags. Now, I find it to be offensive. I think it should be banned, right? They did cheat, so I don't want to, you know, really. But we can discuss that another time. I saw a lot of university pennants, some of which you guys will all agree with and some of which you won't. You had Kentucky, you had Bama, you had Notre Dame, you had a bunch of them. All cannot be flown under this policy. I saw up in the middle school, years and years of Hoops for Hearts flags. Can't be flown. It's advocacy. I then saw a lot of Support Our Troop stickers. Way to go, teachers. Super proud of you. Keep those coming. I think it's really important. Can't be displayed. The problem with things when we start banning them universally is that there are downstream effects and consequences that we don't understand. What I found in touring every room in every school for those three and a half hours, I can count on these hands... I can count on these hands, the number of flags, and I didn't even know it existed, by the way, maybe shame on me, that starts with a black line, it goes brown, it gets opaque, then to a rainbow thing that says peace. Do I think it's advocacy? I do a bit, especially in an elementary school. The reality is, the Attorney General tells us it does not detract from the learning environment, and if the Attorney General tells us that, we're not going to adjust that, okay? Those were the majority of those flags. There were, I think, three, I could be wrong, and maybe I missed one, actual gay pride flags that you just showed, that right there. One of them was in an administrator's office. So I don't know how many classrooms I went through, but I went through tens of thousands of square feet of space, and if I include the flag that we've already been told does not detract from the learning environment, which we cannot make a policy to say otherwise, I can count them on this hand, that does not seem to be a pervasive problem. So then I sat back and I thought, however, we don't want teachers giving their point of view, pressuring their students, adversely affecting kids. I asked a lot of people about this, and the way you ask this question is interesting. When I say, "Do you want teachers to be able to influence what your children think and read, and ultimately their political agenda, or their specific point of view?", 100% of the people, anecdotally, small study, 30 people, 100% said absolutely not. By the way, if I ask 100% of teachers, they'll also tell me they don't want to do it, right? Maybe, okay, maybe 90%. I then said, "Should teachers raise controversial issues and foster debate in a classroom to make sure that we're talking about key things in current events?" It's about 70%, yes, 30%, no. See, the problem is, there's a grave distrust of government. Two, two and a half years ago, this community went through hell. I got up and spoke vocally about what I thought we were doing was the wrong thing to do, and what was said over and over and over again was we were bringing national political issues to town when it wasn't necessary, and it's hypocritical. That's exactly what's happening here. We are bringing a national agenda to Pembroke Public Schools, and it's wrong. So, I then asked kids, right? Now, my kids have been through the school system. I had three, they graduated. My 23-year-olds, it's really interesting, started forwarding me things, because they were getting kids reaching out to them. And I said, "Was this there, you know, did you have pride flags in the classroom? Did you have this? Did you have that?" And they said, "Yeah, it was there." I said, "Did it affect how you learned?" My daughter Olivia was really funny, she's like, "Dad, we didn't care. We just learned, right? Like, we just had to get it done." She's graduating from B.C. Law in a couple of months, so I'm gonna say she did okay, right? So for me, this fails the legal test. For me, it fails the kids' test. I think it robs parents of something, too. Because, look, not every household is going to be opening and welcoming if their child decides they're a little different. And for me, kids coming and finding an adult at home is the best place to do it. Again, parents are the best teachers for their kids. And having a discussion about who am I, what am I, am I okay, is a great discussion for a mom and a dad and a family to have. And to loop it into your faith is also a good thing. Faith being part of this discussion is a good thing. However, not everybody has that family. And I sure the heck would rather a kid look at a sticker that is about this big on the outside of a door, there are 27 of them in Pembroke Public Schools, that says, "This is a safe place, you can talk to me." So, I think, I will say that when I was at the dinner table with my kids and they were talking about different things, and some of them, I would shake my head, I'm like, "Oh, God, God." It's like, "You're gonna vote for Bernie and I'll have to throw you out of the house." Like, stop. But it spurred debate, right? It spurred discussion. I had a hand in teaching my kids how to engage. I had a hand in teaching my kids how to disagree. I had a hand with saying to my kids, "It's okay that we don't agree," right? That's also good in the classroom, if it's done right. So do we need a policy? Part of the policy that got left out, and I have to find it here in my papers, which is the existing policy that we have, we have a bunch of them. First, we have a policy that's simply the law, right? It states the law, thank you. Nope. It states the law that says, "Teachers cannot engage in electioneering. Teachers cannot use the time..." No, no, not that one. So teachers cannot use the classroom time to campaign. You cannot use public funds to campaign, in essence. It's the law. We restate the law, it's fine. The other policy around controversial issues, which is the one, for whatever reason, I cannot put my hands on, anyone have it, Andy? IMB, right? Which is the policy we have in place today. It already deals with almost everything that we talked about, right? So we don't allow Black Lives Matter flags in our classrooms, because it is divisive and detracted from the learning environment, and our administrators get to make that call. However, I found it really interesting, and what I like about this policy is it says, it gives teachers a guideline. It says, "Teacher-planned classroom discussion. Controversial issues selected by teachers for classroom discussion must relate directly to the content and objectives of courses that have been approved by the school committee." Teacher's right to introduce controversial issues in the classroom does not include the right to advocacy. We have a policy that deals with this. Teachers are to refrain from using their position to express partisan points of view in the current policy. The approach to discussion must be objective and scholarly, and teachers must ensure that the reasoned arguments of all sides of an issue are given equal presentation and emphasis in the discussion. Students should be prepared and follow-up activities which are appropriate to the presentation should be provided. Teachers may invite visitors from outside the school to give presentations on controversial issues when the speaker offers qualifications and resources not available in the school. All visitors will be guided by the rules, standards of language, usage, dress, and behavior that prevail in the school. All materials and/or literature to be distributed by an invited speaker shall be approved in advance by the administrator in charge. In all cases, teachers must obtain permission from the principal or direct supervisor in charge at least 48 hours before the scheduled presentation. And then it goes in to talk about after-school activity. That's a pretty comprehensive guideline. So if I have a policy that literally deals with everything that's been raised so far, I don't know why I need a new one. The last thing that I'm going to throw out, and it's the unintended consequences. So I'm a finance guy. The other thing that I did this weekend is I spent two and a half hours going through the revenue projections of the town. They're not great. One of the questions that I asked our legal counsel is, if we get sued, and I would argue it's when, what is it going to cost to defend a civil rights case? There are six figures in that number, right? The other issue is candidly practical. We live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, very rarely does anyone I vote for get elected. I know that's going to be the case. I am not the poster child of the progressive left. As a matter of fact, several of you have called me very awful nasty things because I'm too conservative. I'm okay with that. It's about debating, about the screen, and getting to a better answer. This individual discussion, this individual cause that is already handled by a policy is killing our brand. Pembroke has a brand. The likelihood that the legislature on Beacon Hill is going to turn around and help us economically is gravely diminished. I also think that it helps us recruit talent. At the end of the day, in post-COVID, finding a really good teacher is really hard to do. And if it means that you've got to jump through multiple hoops, and the political whim of the day can grossly affect how you engage with your student, why would you come here when you can get paid more and duck spare and have fewer issues? So, I would offer to all of us around this table, and I would offer all of you, the logical approach. We have a policy that does this already. We have case law that specifically tells us, "We can't do what is stated in a vague and difficult-to-enforce suggestion." I do think, however, I heard two or three things as I was on my information gathering that do need to be addressed. I want to talk to the students in this auditorium, because quite honestly, all the adults should be able to figure this stuff out for yourselves. No one, no one has the right, because of your faith, because of your identity, because of your skin color, or because of your belief structure, has the right to diminish you. No one. You have rights. And if you're not comfortable voicing those rights for fear of repercussion, whatever they are, you've got the right to do it anonymously. And now I'm going to look at the administrators around this table. We're the big people. Every kid is to be treated fairly, every kid is to be treated equitably, and every kid has a voice, whether it's because they want to pray before their meal, or they want to date somebody of the same gender. It's irrelevant. Every kid has a voice, and by the way, you all matter. I then want to say that I think we do, and we are going through our policy manual, policy IMB could include the right to voice a concern anonymously, so you know. It can also include the right to make sure parents know, there's an escalation protocol. If your child says something, and you raise it to an administrator and nothing is done, you go to the superintendent. That's our protocol today. If the superintendent then does nothing, you come to this board. That is your right today. We don't need a new policy to enforce that. That is your right ultimately today. I want to close by also saying something that I think is really important to be said. I've known Sue for a long time. There is not malice in her heart with us. I promise you. Sue really believes that what she is doing is the right thing and good for kids. She does not hate anyone. She really believes this is good. And I respect that, Sue. I really, truly respect that. We can be on opposite sides of this, but there is a lot of love in her heart, and I've seen it. She is a woman of faith, and that's a good thing. So, I would ask this committee to move on. It is time to move on. I would ask Allison and Sue, when you're doing the review, I think you've heard some feedback, it would be really good to be clear what the steps are in our existing policy. But if it fails legal, it fails kids, it fails families, it fails the practical, it fails the economic, it fails. There's no need for another policy.
Thank you, Patrick, for your thoughts. I think it's really important that we hear from the community, and, oh, Lauren, you are next. I would love for you to hear your thoughts.
Does this one, okay, this one goes out. All right. So as a Stu representative, I think I have like a little bit like of insight that, that a lot of people don't have. So, I've been in Pembroke since I was in kindergarten. So I spent 180 days for the past decade in the school system, and I have only ever seen two pride flags in classrooms, and I've never seen a Blue Lives Matter or a Black Lives Matter flag in a classroom. But I think these critical and important conversations can only happen when teachers are not limited in what they're able to advocate for. So I think that we do not need a policy that would restrict teachers' social and political rights in the classroom. Like, this is an issue that concerns us, the students. And students want teachers to be able to advocate for them. And that's like my issue, my opinion on the topic.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the students, and I'm gonna go by the sign-in sheet. So I'd like to start with Avery Nickerson, if you'd still like to speak. She's not speaking. How about Cadence? No? Yeah? Cadence Nickerson?
Sue, they put next to it what they want to speak about, if they want to speak.
Okay.
So the line means they're just signing in to let you know that they're here.
Okay.
If they want to speak about the policy, they're right next to it.
All right, so these-
We had a technical issue on sign-in, so-
All right.
Give her a break. Let me, you want me to take a look? So- All right, Silas Bell? Are you here?
I would like to start this off with the fact that I fully believe that pride flags and any coexist or anything is fully inclusive to everyone, considering the fact that the coexist literally means for everyone to coexist within one space. I would also like to bring up the issue of the fact of what harm this could do to the LGBTQ+ community if pride flags are indeed taken away. I would like to state that I came out in Florida, not exactly the best place to come out. And I have been here for four years now. This is one of the most accepting places I have ever been. This school is amazing when it comes to diversity for everyone, not just LGBTQ+ folks or people of different skin colors. We have teachers who have different religions, and are very open about it, and still can find it within their hearts to fully accept everyone. Another fact I would like to bring up, well, it's just going back to what can happen if the pride flags are taken away. I have a list here of rates of depression and attempted suicides within the LGBTQ+ community due to not being supported. suicides within the LGBTQ+ community due to not being supported. Of the general community, 57% experience depression. That's a lot. 10% are threatened with a weapon in a school, in public school. 34% are bullied on school property. And 26% experience cyberbullying. 41% of the LGBTQ+ community seriously consider suicide. And this report was done by the Trevor Project of May 1st of last year. The rate is much, much higher with trans individuals. In fact, 56% of the LGBTQ+ community that is transmas, seriously consider suicide. 48% for trans women, and also 48% for non-binary and queer youth. If this is passed, I believe that our school will not be as safe as it is now. I also, I have looked over-
Just let you know, we're at about four minutes. So just if you could just wrap up, that would be great. I don't want to... All right. Fair enough. Go ahead.
I would also like to bring up the fact that I have read everything of what you all said at the previous meeting about this. And from what I have been able to gather, teachers would only be able to have flags and pins if they are a part of the community. Is that correct?
Teachers specifically, not students.
Yes. This is forcing teachers to out themselves. No one should be forced to out themselves. That is all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We are going to keep moving, otherwise everyone won't get a chance. So the next on the list is Chris Regan.
Hello. My name is Chris Regan, and I'm a senior here at Pembroke High School. I would like to begin by saying that it especially, I find it especially troubling that in 2024, it is suggested that a symbol of community and a sense of belonging, such as the pride flag, shall be removed in the name of political and/or social advocacy in the classroom. The pride flag has served the purpose of celebrating the LGBTQ+ community and embracing our differences. This measure goes against precedents established by the Supreme Court, stating that, quote, "educational authorities who want to censor speech will need to show that permitting the speech would significantly interfere with the discipline needed for the school to function," referring to Tinker v. Des Moines. This proposal suggested here must prove the pride flag or any other flag impedes significantly on a student's ability to learn and a school's ability to function to warrant removal. You may not realize what the adverse effects of removing this flag will produce. By doing so, it will send a message to the students, but it will also send a message to the faculty, who may be LGBTQ, that this community does not accept them. We don't know, we don't know how everyone has it at home, whether they are accepted or not for being who they are. Students may see a school as a place where they are accepted and where they can be their true selves. It is my understanding that the only ones whose education experience will be impeded upon are those of the LGBTQ+ community by creating an environment where they may not feel they don't belong. Finally, I would like to add that I find this potential policy change concerning, as it may give rise to a slippery slope where more expressions of free speech may be restricted. Please consider those who will be affected most by this policy.
Thank you.
All right. The next student on the list is Daniel Nogair.
Hey, everybody. I'm Daniel Nogair. I'm a junior here at PHS. And I'm usually up there performing. I'm down here. But it's a lot more nerve-wracking when you're down here, it turns out. I'm here to talk to you. First, I want to thank all of you guys for, you know, coming to this conversation. You know, I think it's, you know, civil participation is always great to see. But why I'm here is I want to argue for the, about the relevance and priority of this, of this topic that we brought up today, which is changing a policy that we already have in place. To me, and I'm sure to many others, proposing a change to the status quo Ms. Glennon mentioned is not worth our time and potentially our The world is ending outside. And, you know, we're working on the reaccreditation process led by Mr. Talbot. We've had a few Titan Time Google meets about that. And so we're, you know, prioritize, we have to prioritize that. The printers aren't working. Got to fix that soon. But anyways, what I really want to say is that I, as a student, and, you know, this is for the students, this affects the students, what I really think is that I don't think that is worth bringing this conversation so far, as where we have to keep on arguing and talking and, oh, this and this. I don't think we have to keep going around with that to change a policy that we already have in place, as Mr. Chilkad already mentioned. And so I think, from what I've heard, if we already have a policy in place, and from what I've heard, I've read a bit of the transcript from the past meeting, if, if we want to change this, this policy that we already have in place, and we already have all these people, these students, who say they're going to be affected by this, by this change, that we really should not put this change in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's only two more students on the list. I'm actually going to ask you guys to come up together so that you can go one right after the other. The first is Gwen Mueller or Mueller and Sophia Perkins.
Am I going first?
Is this it?
I am Gwen Mueller. I am a 10-year-old fourth grader, and I attend Bryantville Elementary I am here because my mom told me that there was, that they were planning to take down some of the pride flags and other flags other than the American flag down from classrooms. I started in second grade, and I, well, for me, it was, I'm pretty sure, well, my memory says it was just the American flag in my classrooms. And I don't know if other classrooms in the school has stuff like the pride flag and stuff. But I want to see more than just the American flag, and I think it would be good support for some other kids.
Gwen, Gwen, I just want to say, to courage for a 10-year-old kid to get up in front of all these people. Well done. Your mom should be proud of you. All right, that's right. I'll get it. All right, Sophia, go ahead.
All right. Good evening. My name is Sophia Perkins, and I am a senior this year at Pembroke High School. And I have come here today to discuss the inherent bigotry that comes from a policy that would ban political and social advocacy in the classroom. In the year 2024, everyone my age and below has the ability to gain knowledge at their fingertips. This generation can see with their own eyes the social injustice and atrocities that burden this country every day. I believe that this policy will only worsen the state of the Pembroke school system and will close the eyes of children entering a country that is only trying to become more diverse, accepting, and inclusive. Positive change can only be made when there is questioning. This ban will completely diminish students' ability to speak up in the classroom. Not only will it close the eyes of new generations coming through the Pembroke school system, it will in turn make the town of Pembroke look like an uneducated, senseless town. The ban of social advocacy goes directly against the right of free speech we are all given when we are born as Americans. Students grow up being told their rights and amendments in school, and Pembroke officials have no place to take that away from us. School is supposed to be, thank you. School is, school is supposed to be a safe place for all students who enter. How can any of you say that a ban like this would allow for any student who may be questioning their identity or where they fit into this world feel safe if a ban like this should be implemented? I strongly, I strongly believe that a ban like this will bring devastation to families of LGBTQ or POC students and their families, and will shut them out from a community who is actively trying to. The town of Pembroke will be set back decades if they decide to implicate this ban. It shows the rest of the state that we don't allow our students or teachers to speak freely. When I was younger, my mother had always told me to enter this world unapologetically when it comes to standing up for what you believe in. I grew up hearing her and other adults say things such as, "You raise your children to set them free into this world." As educators and parents, imagine your children as young adults, being away at college or entering the workforce for the first time, and being with others from different races, religion, and sexual orientations. Your child is not able to even have a conversation with their coworkers, classmates, or professors, because when your child was growing up, their school system didn't allow for any discussion surrounding A ban like this is even being considered in our community because it doesn't directly affect any of you trying to enforce it. Thank you for your time.
All right. Hey, what's that? There I am. All right. All right. So, because we really want to hear from kids, right? So unless they get a little messed up, you guys, you will have a chance to speak. Are there any other kids other than the two, and I don't mean kids pejoratively. I mean, to me, you're almost all kids. But is there any student, I'm getting corrected here, that wishes to speak that may not have had, just go and stand in line, because we are going to hear from you. All right. All right. Go ahead. Do you guys have two minutes?
Can take this down a little bit. I am Karina Frank. I'm a junior here at PHS. And originally, I was going to cite this whole letter drafted from the ACLU, the American Civil Liberties Union, but it's a little bit too long for that. Yeah.
All right.
I had a feeling, so I'm just going to skip past that. I just wanted to speak about something that seems to be the major topic. It's mainly focused on neutrality and, or just giving students a neutral environment to learn in. And it seems that everyone is kind of looking forward this, towards this idealistic version of neutrality. But when you shoot for an ideal goal, you're in an, you're setting yourself up for a situation that is ignorant to reality, and ignorant to the realistic effects of an ideal solution to a realistic problem. And for me personally, I've only ever been in the Pembroke school system, and I've only ever felt supported by my teachers. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Grace Stevens. I'm a sophomore here at Pembroke High School, and my speech is a little long, so I'm going to try my best. I would like to talk about what I have noticed in relation to this policy. I will be citing the transcript for the meeting on January 11th, 2024, the policy proposal being discussed today, as well as the Supreme Court case, Tinker v. Des Moines, as well as the U.S. Constitution. Myself and my peers have raised some concerns regarding the contents of these policies. Firstly, I noticed that the proposals have some interesting rhetoric. The proposals say how, quote, "Students who wear jewelry, clothes, jewelry, pins, or flags of a nature that displays their political partisan or social policy advocacy are not school-appropriate and how these articles should be strictly prohibited." It also restricts staff under a similar, like, parameter, I suppose. Quote, "Staff who would like to wear jewelry or pins that represent a part of their own personal identity or culture, as long as it is not done to advocate for any particular group." These circumstances were addressed in 1969 by the Supreme Court case, Tinker v. Des Moines, which has been referenced, but I'm just going to add a little background. Basically, kids wore armbands in opposition of the Vietnam War. They were told to take them off. They didn't. They got suspended. Supreme Court case decided, and I quote, "Students do not shed their constitutional right to freedom or speech, freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gate," putting this policy in a direct violation of the PHS students' First Amendment rights. This is something that Superintendent Obi mentioned briefly in the meeting last week, though not directly, informing the board that many of these students who will be affected by these policies are of a protected class under the Massachusetts state law and therefore is subject to some fun little discrimination Yes, actually, it is. Secondly, and this is something that jumped out at me immediately, the proposal states that, quote, "The display of the flag of the United States of America or the flag of any of the 50 states of any of the United States military branch or any flag representing the town or the school district are the only flags allowed to be flown or hung." I ask anybody in the audience who has recently been in the language hallway but to think about the classes like Spanish, French, and a more recent edition Arabic, and how these classes will often hang, like, the flags of the countries that, where these languages are frequently spoken in, as well as the fact that there are like, there are like, how do I describe it? It's like little things of miniature flags from around the world, banners, hanging in said hallway. In order to be in accordance with these policies, all of these flags would have to be taken down. Not to mention, Pembroke High School has been and currently is host of several exchange students from all over the world, including Portugal, Spain, and Egypt. I would also like to bring to the table a current, how did I put this? The Titan Promise. I'm just going to go with that, AKA The Portrait of a Pembroke Titan. One of the, on this poster, it states the ideal traits for us Titans here at Pembroke. One specific verse sticks out to me. Under the engaged citizens section, which states that "A Titan should embrace diversity and leverage that power to advocate for those in need." I would like to trust that the faculty of this school will see to it that the new policy aligns with these principles without breaking them. Considering the current climate and how difficult college admissions are becoming, with the mental health crisis and as well as the increase in school shooters nationwide, I do question if these are the best use of the school board's time and if these are the conversations that we should be having in order to support our teachers and our students.
All right. Better finish, please.
I question if these are conversations we should be having to better support the teachers and our students, as well as following the morals of The Portrait of the Pembroke Titan. I would also like to bring up some bullet points from the discussion that we- I would also like to bring up some bullet points from the discussion that we've previously been having. As to the argument that several of these flags are not school-appropriate or they shouldn't be hung, I know of these flags that you're referencing, the Don't Shred on Me is in one of the history hallways and the snake that is featured on it is, I think it's like a political cartoon, I don't know, yeah, political cartoon of the colonies during the Revolutionary War and how they were like all together and they're like, "Let's beat England." And many of these pins that are also being referenced are fundraisers for the Saga Clubs, the Multicultural Clubs, the Amnesty Clubs, in order to give these clubs funding and they're a part of the club, which honestly, under this policy, would kind of be protected should they do the little letter thing, but I would also like to-
Hey Grace, Grace, I got, I'm going to give you like a thirty-second wrap-up period, alright?
I'll talk fast.
No, that's all good, go.
So, I would, thank you for your time, I would like to wrap this up, but another thing I noticed was you were saying that speak as though your children are in the room and I would like to mention that I'm pretty sure we kind of are in the room and we're telling you that this is a bad idea, so please don't do it.
Touche, Grace, touche.
Enjoy.
So, could you just state your name?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Can I lower this a little bit?
File, it's not what that is.
You're not tall, I'm short. Good evening, I'm Ivy Pongrats, I'm a junior in high school. I'd like to start by reminding that this is not a ban of pride flags. This is, this does not restrict the students' ability to advocate at all for any cause that they feel they should advocate for. I'd like to say I was very hesitant to speak when I got here tonight, mostly for the reason that I have friends sitting in the audience and I know that I will be disagreeing with a lot of them, if not all of them. It's highly possible that me and my sister may be the only ones who are speaking, that the pride flag is controversial and is a social and political topic. It's scary for kids to come forward and say that they disagree, which is exactly why I feel like it's so important for me to speak. I'd like to say that there are students who disagree and who are uncomfortable with the teachers putting up pride flags in their classrooms. This is not about banning pride frak, pride flags. This doesn't restrict the students in their clubs and, and from their person from representing and showing support of whatever topics they choose. This is about keeping teachers neutral in all topics and conversations. And I think that the fear of speaking out, if nothing else, shows that this is 100% a controversial topic. Thank you.
Great job.
Hey Ivy, Ivy, I just want to say it took guts. Good job.
Very brave.
Hi, my name is Cora Pongrats, I'm a freshman at Pembroke High School. I would just like to start by saying, when I came in here, I wasn't originally planning on speaking about anything at all and I didn't have anything prepared because I thought that everything I wanted to say would already be said by someone else, but coming in here and listening to all the other students made me realize that I might be, other than my sister, one of the only ones who really is agreeing that this is something we should be putting into schools. I think that it should be much more up to the parents than up to teachers to be teaching kids what is right and wrong and about beliefs and identities and everything like that. I think teachers, teachers should be teaching kids about what is in the curriculum and everything of that sort, but they don't need to go out of that and it's really out of their bounds to be influencing, influencing kids in any other sort of way. I think that in my, I've only been in the Pembroke schools for three years, but in these three years, everyone keeps saying they've only seen a few pride flags, but I've seen a lot and I think that a lot of people here all agree that we need equality and we need representation for everyone, but I feel like we're seeing a lot more representation for the LGBTQIA community than anything else, which is not a bad thing. They do deserve representation just as much as anyone else, but I think that there are a lot of other minorities that are not at all being represented that should be also represented.
Cora, nice job, nice job.
Great job, very brave.
My name is Lily Cullenane and I'm an eighth grader at the middle school. As a gay teenager, I have always seen people been able to express who they like as a straight couple in my schools and I haven't. I have been scared to express my girlfriends, my crushes. The first teacher that I ever came out to was Megan Sneak. And she set the bar for me and taught me that it was okay to be who I am. Seeing a little sticker on a door doesn't change who someone is or what someone believes in, it just teaches kids that they are able to be who they are.
Thank you.
Thank you and great job.
Alright, so, last call on students. Is there any other student that wants to speak? Did you want to speak? Go ahead. And then we'll, we'll move on, you have the list, right?
Hi, I'm a student, I'm a senior for Pembroke High School, Sophia Regan. I wasn't originally going to like start saying anything, but I wanted to personally say something because specifically this year I came out as bisexual and my family has been very accepting, and my brother, and I just, I, when I heard about this, I was just like completely astounded by what I heard and I was like, it makes no sense because I think of Pembroke as in, like, a comforting, good town where everyone's accepting. My family, my friends have been so great about it and especially with my teachers, with their like saying like, "This is a safe place." I find it like, it was so surprising to like see, like, this about, like, how it's not right or like teachers can't share their opinions on it, but it's like, it's not social or political because they're just sharing to students that they can be a safe place for students that don't feel comfortable, whether it be at home or certain friends or anything like that, and I just wanted to share my truth on that.
I just, I just want to say thank you to the kids, every single one of them, you did a fantastic job. I know it's not easy to get up here and say how you feel and I really appreciate every single opinion that was shared, so, so, they did a great job, the kids are fantastic. So, we're going to move on to parents and, you know, I didn't time the kids, as you noticed, I thought, you know, we, once we got past the five-minute mark with the first one, it just didn't make sense to do so for any of them, so, but moving forward, if we don't start timing this, we will be here all night and, or, you know, we'll miss our ninety-minute mark. So, we are going to start with the parents and staff and I'm just going to go down the list, I'll do a parent and then a staff member, I'll just kind of go back and forth, that's okay. So, the first is, Eileen, I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong, but Eileen Flashman is up first. And then after him will be Tim Kennedy, if you want to get ready.
Hello, my name is Eileen Flashman, you did pretty good this time. I have two school children in the schools, uh, two children in the school system and I want to thank the school committee, the teachers and the staff for all the hard work they do to make this an exceptional school system for our kids. Truly, I mean it, thank you. However, I am concerned that the quality of our schools is being threatened by unnecessary policies effectively targeting pride flags in our schools. I have three things to say on this matter, I'll be succinct. Number one, schools are already facing a shortfall of about $2 million because it costs that much more to fund the same as last year. Do you understand that every single LGBTQ plus kid in our schools today has legal standing because you would be violating their civil rights if you pass this? That's, how many lawsuits can the school afford with the shortfalls a school is facing? We have bigger issues to solve that require critical work of the school committee and removing pride flags is a waste of everybody's time. Number two, LGBTQ plus kids in schools are actively facing verbal, physical harassment and assault. A 2021 survey of Massachusetts students, which was referenced earlier, shows that there is current and active incidents still occurring. So, we're, we have ongoing student incidents for LGBTQ kids, plus kids, and we have, what we have heard in the past policy subcommittee discussions is that there are several kids uncomfortable because of the pride flag, because their religion is against it and they don't want to speak up because they're afraid to be called a homophobe. The argument here is that we should take away pride flags that help students who are being harassed from knowing who is safe to talk to so that some students can avoid potentially being called homophobic. There is a greater harm here if we take away pride flags to the students and the learning environment. Let's not create a policy to solve unreported issues. I trust our teachers and administrations, so let's allow them to do their jobs. Number three, policy, sorry, moving ahead with a policy that effectively focused on removing pride flags and pins but written so broadly that will ban staff from wearing pins in support of awareness of things like autism, disability, and cancer and more unless you are a member of that group, effectively forcing people to out themselves. And who is going to oversee policing this? For example, the progress pride flag encompasses lesbian, gay, transgender, queer, communities of color, people living with HIV and AIDS and more. Are you really going to demand that a teacher wearing a pride pin out themselves? How are you going to research that? No employer is allowed to ask these questions to employees and the school is no different.
Thank you, Eileen.
I'm just saying thank you, I'm done.
Okay.
And I thank you and your audience for the time this evening. Let's hope that we choose to do right by our kids in our schools. That's it.
Thank you. Tim Kennedy.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Kennedy, I've been a member of the teaching staff at Bryanville Elementary School for the past twenty-seven years. During that time, it's been my pleasure and privilege to serve the district as an educator. Throughout the years, I've been able to bear witness to the growth of the community and the shift from being part of the Silver Lake Regional School System to taking those first steps towards creating the Pembroke Public Schools. With that change came the responsibility for the school committee to usher in a new era for our school district. I also stand before you today as a voice of the Pembroke Teachers Association. Many decisions have been made throughout the years that have shaped our schools and this latest conversation in regards to creating new policy has us greatly concerned as educators. After reviewing the notes from the latest subcommittee meeting, it's only strengthened our resolve to speak up about this proposal to create new language. Having listened to the explanation regarding the impetus and reasoning for the changes, it would appear that this is an undercurrent of religious beliefs that are being allowed to shape and influence the development of policies. In our estimation, this policy treads dangerously into the realm of being able to keep separate the concepts of church and state as provided by our own constitution. It also makes us question the need for such changes to the language of a policy that has served well and never required amendments. Furthermore, as educators and administrators, there's a responsibility to create a safe school climate as outlined by the safe school programs in our DESE. The Regulations for Massachusetts State Rights Law, MGL Chapter 76, Section 5, states that, quote, "All public school systems shall, through their curriculum, encourage respect for the human and civil rights of all individuals regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation." A policy such as the one being introduced would seem to function in contradiction to these regulations. Another concern of ours centers around who would be given the power to determine which social issues are considered divisive and based upon what measures. Currently, these decisions are being made every day by the professionals working for the school district and they've been making appropriate decisions for many years to the point that there is no need to put into place such language for additional measures for a policy that's proven to be effective. As we educate our students on being our future leaders and the citizens that will shape tomorrow, it's imperative that we do so in a way that promotes tolerance and acceptance of others and celebrates those differences that make us all who we are. If the concept of treating all others with dignity and respect is a divisive subject, then we truly are concerned about the future of this community. Those who are privileged with the role of leadership must recognize that along with it goes the responsibility to wield that power justly. As a union, we find such a policy reprehensible-
Excuse me, we're a bit past, we're two and a half minutes, so.
An embarrassment for the town. We feel that it takes us in a direction that would make us simply question our future and consider our future employment in the community because discrimination and tolerance towards others when masked behind policy rhetoric and values is still discrimination and intolerance.
So, if, if you could just sit down so that we could keep, keep on schedule, we'll be here all night if we don't do that, so, if I could have Joshua, I'm sorry if I don't pronounce this correctly, Gendro, and Naomi Lieber come up, so Joshua first and then Naomi.
Hi, I'm Josh Gendro, I have a child in the school system and I think being in public school, the most important thing is that everybody's included and that it's a safe space for everyone, right? So, that's pretty basic and I don't think that having a pride flag is going to do any harm to anybody, I think that it's going to help include people and I think it's very fair and I think that if anybody else feels like they're going to need a flag, then that can be a discussion that's had. But right now, it seems like we're discussing taking away a flag that helps include people that need to be included. So, one concern I have is, it seems like in some schools, there's a sticker on a door or in a classroom that'll say, "No bullying" or "Safe space" or "No place for hate," which is a, a great program that like eighteen hundred schools are part of and some of them will have like a rainbow circle around it. So, we're talking about making a policy that's going to take away a, a sign that students can look at in class during their day that makes them feel safe and included, it says "No bullying," but because it's got a rainbow or a flag or something on it that makes the teachers and the students feel included and safe, we're going to take it away? It just doesn't make sense to me. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Naomi Lieber, I teach eighth grade at the Pembroke Community Middle School. I have a few statistics on LGBTQ mental health and some of them have already been stated, but two important ones to me are the LGBTQ youth who live in a community that is accepting of all LGBTQ peoples, reported significantly lower rates of attempted suicide than those who do not. Additionally, LGBTQ youth who found their school to be LGBTQ-affirming, reported lower rates of attempted suicide. Speaking as a teacher, I know that I can speak for myself and many of my colleagues that we care for all of our students equally, we care very deeply for them and as a teacher that was affected by student suicide, I've cared deeply about the mental health of all of my students. Additionally, I would like to yield the rest of my time to Ms. Julie Guerin.
Thank you. Okay, so, we have up next Julie Barone and then Julie Guerin. Julie Barone, Baroney, did I say it wrong? Did she leave? Okay, so then we'll just go right to Julie Guerin.
Hello, my name is Julie Guerin and I teach eighth grade social studies at the middle school. As a longtime employee of Pembroke Public Schools, I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposal to create a new policy regarding political, social advocacy in the classroom. As a social studies teacher, I'm well aware of the district's current policy regarding teaching about controversial issues. It's a public document which teachers in the community have access to. Additionally, teachers have reviewed the policy at our staff meetings. The current district policy, which I wholeheartedly agree with, prohibits teachers from using their positions to advocate for issues or express their point of view in the classroom. Simply put, it's good teaching to adhere to the current district policy. However, the issue before us is to change the current working policy to designate a pride flag as controversial and/or advocacy. Please note, this proposed change doesn't stop with a pride flag. It could also include posters, flags relating to autism, and a slew of other topics that some could find uncomfortable. Let me take a brief moment to explain to the committee why I, as a classroom middle school teacher, have a pride flag hanging in my classroom. A few years ago, feedback was shared at a staff meeting that the middle school GSA Club students felt that it would be helpful if teachers displayed some symbol demonstrating that it was a safe space for them. As a highly educated professional, I'm well aware of the developmental stage of my students that it creates a heightened sense or need to feel connected and accepted by their peers. This is one of the reasons we teach in teams at the middle school. Additionally, I am all too aware of the statistics relating to suicide and self-harm among this marginal- marginalized community. Furthermore, I'm also well-versed in how students learn, and if they're too stressed or feel unsafe in the classroom, new information is difficult to process. My job is to educate the students before me. Therefore, I hung a pride flag to let students see that this is a safe space to learn. I also have signage welcoming students and emphasizing that in my classroom, everyone belongs. In the four years that I've had the pride flag hanging, there's never been any classroom discussion relating to it. Simply put, it's a visual reminder to the students in my classroom, this is a safe place for learning, it's a, excuse me, it's a safe learning environment for all. For the students that a pride flag holds a different meaning and may feel uncomfortable, I would say this is a wonderful learning opportunity to reflect on empathy and tolerance. The classroom is a microcosm for the real world, and we need to prepare all students to coexist and respect one another despite any personal beliefs they may hold. I would also like to add that students being uncomfortable is not something that teachers should avoid. For example, my students are uncomfortable when I sit the necks of somebody they don't know, or when I encourage them to think more critically about a topic, and when I acquire them to use proper speaking and listening skills when they present a current event in the classroom. Learning can coexist with a degree of discomfort. In fact, I would argue that the greatest growth usually does. I would like to conclude by respectfully asking that you vote down this proposal as the district currently has a policy that addresses advocacy in the classroom in its working. Furthermore, the district has qualified building principles to address any issue that may arise if a staff member violates the policy. Adopting this proposed new policy would be a deliberate attempt to further disenfranchise marginalized students within the Pembroke School System, and I ask that you don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on the list, we have Erin Columbeve. Do I have that correct? And then after Erin, we have Nicole McCann. So if-
You almost got it right. It's Columbeare. It's difficult. My name is Erin Columbeare, and I'm a Pembroke resident, and I have two children in the Pembroke Public School System, a second grader and a kindergartner who attend Bryanville Elementary. This afternoon, I showed my children a picture of the pride flag, something that they're very familiar with. I asked them how they felt when they saw it. My second grader said she loved the pride flag because it means everyone is accepted no matter who they love. My kindergartner said that the pride flag made her feel happy because it means love, and why don't you want love? There are so many statistics that show that when schools are affirming and accepting of all students, it benefits the entire student population, but I didn't come here tonight to read statistics. All students who attend Pembroke Public Schools deserve to feel safe and loved. They deserve to feel supported regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. It is our duty as parents to ensure this for them and to protect them. By removing the pride flag from classrooms, Pembroke is showing the rest of the world that we are not a safe place to raise their children. Removing this flag from the schools would be doing a disservice not only to our LGBTQ plus students, but also to the students who identify as cisgender and heterosexual. The world is so much bigger than our small town, and our students deserve to know that. There is a big, beautiful, diverse world outside of little Pembroke, Massachusetts, and we are only harming our children if we try to pretend otherwise. Removing the pride flag from classrooms is what I fear is only the first step that will be taken by a few individuals to remove the presence of other marginalized groups. That is not the place I want to raise my children in. I wholeheartedly stand with the LGBTQ plus community and request that the Pembroke Public Schools remain an inclusive place for all children by continuing to allow the presence of the pride flag in our schools. And I just want to say, the fact that this is even up for debate in 2024 is disgusting, and it tarnishes, it tarnishes the good name of the town that I was so excited to move to three years ago. Thank you.
I'm Nicole McCann, kindergarten teacher at North Pembroke Elementary School. I'm just, want to say how proud I am of my students, all of them, no matter what side they spoke on. I think that should just attest to what we have done as teachers. I'm promoting us right now. Mr. Chilcot spoke to most of what I was going to say, which is this slippery slope of making a policy like this. My job innately is an advocate for all of your kids. If they can't read, I advocate to get them help. You take away my advocacy, I will do nothing. And I just want you to know, there was a quote I took right from the subcommittee meeting, "If there's an issue where someone's going to be upset, then we don't have it." And all I'm going to say is, if you've ever been in a kindergarten classroom, we are upset all day long. We will never do anything, ever! And then I won't be able to educate your students, which is all I want to do. So, let's move on, Pembroke.
Okay, so up next, we have, let's see, Debra Tranberg? You're good? And then Lori Campbell? Is she here? No? And then we'll go move on to Rich Flynn, and then after Rich, we will have Grant Nickerson. Rich Flynn? Yes, and then Grant Nickerson is after, if he's here.
Hi, my name's Rich Flynn, Andrew Drive, Pembroke. I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer, I'm also an elected official in town. I think that your proposal is reasonable, and I wrote a statement I'd like you to hear. Every classroom contains a broad mix of students, just as every home has a range of political beliefs. Parents explain and model political and religious views of their children through words and deeds in a way that reflects their desire for them to grow up and become adults. This, however, is not the role of a school official. A civil rights lawsuit against the town is almost certain to follow if administrators and teachers are given the authority to choose what constitutes and does not constitute political expression. It only makes sense to defer to the elected school committee when it comes to providing recommendations to prevent outside political activism. Everybody's rights will be safeguarded by establishing and upholding a neutral policy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rich. Next up is Grant Nickerson, but I don't think, oh, you, all right, perfect. And then after that is Patrick McDonough.
Check one, two. All right. So I did listen to the meeting last week, and the topics, or really, the discussion centered around whether or not the pride flag was a political or social advocacy symbol. Now, I think the discussion sort of funneled down to, that was really the only symbol we were talking about. There was no other flag that was divisive that sounded like that was the only flag that was going to go into that designated room for social issues, which is kind of scary in a way, and a lot of the sort of slippery slope issues that people have talked about already. So some of the topics that you mentioned was that you didn't want to elevate one group of people over another. So by having a pride flag, you're elevating this LGBTQ plus community, but I think there's a difference between elevate and acknowledge. I don't think the pride flag is going to say that the LGBT community, I'm sorry if I'm getting the acronym wrong, is better or above anybody, it's just acknowledging. So I don't, I'm concerned that national identity politics are leaking into this school committee, and I don't like that. And the, did I go on it? I forgot what I was going to close with. So the pride flag is not a symbol attempting to indoctrinate your children. All it is, is a symbol that says, if your children happen to be gay, that's okay. And by taking it down and shoving it in a room somewhere, you're saying that's not okay, and that's not a town that I want to live in.
I'm stealing some time back from Cyrus. Thank you. I think I had like a minute after I gave that to you, and thank you, Grant and Pat, for letting me come in between here. I just wanted to touch on a couple things. Everything has mostly been covered, but aside from that, I just wanted to talk about the way this item was buried in the agenda. It seemed like it was a coverted effort, I guess, and it was very odd to me that you had to really dig into determining what items nine and 10 really meant, and if, after all of this, we all, it's very clear that it's about the pride flag, why wasn't the word "pride flag" in items nine or 10? It just sounds crazy. I probably don't need a microphone, but lastly, a good friend of mine, couldn't make it tonight because this passed his bedtime, James, as we were leaving tonight, said, "I can't make it, but tell them," and I quote, "I'm on the gay side." How sad that in 2024, we're forcing a six-year-old to take a side, gay or heterosexual.
Okay, thank you. Next up, you are Patrick, okay.
Hi, my name is Patrick McDonough. I'm kind of unprepared, I signed the wrong list, but I, while I'm here, my father was an administrator, and I understand how hard it is to be in the classroom and to take care of kids. And as a parent, we trust our kids to get on the bus, to get to school. We instill this trust with the teachers, and from all that we've listened to tonight, it seems like the teachers and the children in the classroom are in consensus. So why don't we, as parents, listen to them and not, you know, take on a policy that's unnecessary? Let's instill some trust back into the teachers, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Steve Sisiati, and then after that is Patty Hoben.
To members of the school committee, school administration, and our great community of Pembroke, my wife and I are parents to two children that attend our Pembroke Public Schools with our third to soon follow behind them. We love our Pembroke Schools and are very strongly engaged with our local community in myriad of ways, from town government to our beloved library and multiple other local volunteer organizations between us. We value STEM, history, warts and all, art, music, phys ed, secularism, independence, and critical thinking skills, and expect our Pembroke Schools to show continuous improvement on focusing on and refining toward educational excellence. However, I've come to learn about a very concerning streak of political activism on the part of some administrators and staff. This activity goes far beyond flags that you can find in a mere three-hour walk-through through the schools. Another example would be a teacher directed their students to write letters on how to save the Turner House. The Turner House, some might be familiar with, was a contentious issue in town. This is something that clearly goes beyond just pride flags. It has become so laissez-faire that where does the line end? Where do we draw the line? Depending on who you talk to, this culture either enhances the educational process or poisons it. And while it's been more or less identified throughout the schools, its reputation especially precedes it at the higher grades. On this, enough families have stated that they don't speak up or push too hard out of fear of some quality of administrative or social retribution. And this point is important just because while their value system might agree with the ends of belonging for everyone, they don't necessarily agree with the means implied, applied, and pushed through a language game that is seemingly always changing. Real quick, I just want to applaud the few students that spoke up and gave voice to those who are too afraid to do so, based on what is very clearly an established culture of activism in the schools.
Please, no, you know, let him finish his, no, it's not. Sorry, but we gave Mr. Kennedy over three minutes and a couple other teachers, and we're going to give Steve his time. All right, are you going to, I didn't stay with three minutes with just about every single person.
All right, all right, enough, enough. We are going to let Steve finish. We've been very open, it's fine. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. It's very clear that as adults, if we can't conduct ourselves civilly in an environment, a social environment of schools, I think if we all go back there in middle and high school, that is going to be that much more brutal, okay? So anyway, this is all quite inappropriate and disruptive to an effective and efficient learning environment, and this is unacceptable. Interestingly, many may recall, we found ourselves in a similar position two to three years ago. Some here can very much empathize with what our school committee is currently facing and the heat involved in taking a real stand against an unrepresentative mob driven by false pretense and compounded by the divisiveness of toxic identity politics. This miasma previously hovered around our governing spaces and apparently remains in our educational ones, and because taking a meaningful and public stand for common sense, reason, fairness, and individualism is so unfortunately rare these days, it is that much more vital to see examples set by those that do. As for the draft policy, the draft proposal intended to begin the conversation, while any revisions to existing policy may look differently than the proposed, I unequivocally support and appreciate the spirit of school committee chairwoman Sue Ballinger's initiative to return better guardrails around our school administration and staff to a place of political neutrality, a place where students can be taught, as Sue said, how to think and not what to think, and empowering current and future students with broader First Amendment rights in order to have more robust and meaningful debates and conversations, and maybe even help some of the adults in this very room, and especially behind a keyboard, relearn what productive, civil, and intellectually honest discussion actually looks like. Thank you.
Do you mind?
Go ahead, go ahead, Patrick.
I really just want to remind everybody of a couple of things, right? Again, you don't have to agree with the speaker, but you will not be rude. We owe it better to the kids that are here to set an example, right? We've heard a lot from one side, you may hear a couple from another side. Everyone deserves our attention. Everyone deserves to have their mind open. Let's continue.
Absolutely. So is Patty Hoben here? Okay, you're all right, perfect. Kristin and David Norman, are you, you're good? Okay, great, thanks. Next on the list, you're down. You're good? Paris? Do you want to get up?
My name is Paris Ballinger, and I want to thank Patrick for speaking up for Sue's character. She's had a lot of character assassination because she became the lightning rod for those who are afraid to speak up, and as elected officials duly charged as sworn to speak for everyone in the community. And I want to say that Sue is not a homophobe. Our oldest daughter is part of the LGBTQ community, as is other family members we have loving and caring, very loving and caring relationships with. So those aspersions and the character assassinations are misplaced in addition to friends in the community that we socialize with as part of the LGBTQ plus. And I also agree that it's so important to make LGBTQ plus kids feel safe and promote a welcoming environment where all kids can feel safe where there is no favoritism. There's been a lot of discussion on the pride flag, which I'm guessing is- There's been a lot of discussion on the pride flag, which I'm guessing is, you know, I don't, I think there was like 12 or something like that out of 220 classrooms, and it's dominated this discussion, and I don't know that that was really supposed to happen, but that's the way that this went. The bigger issue for me, and I don't think this is with all teachers, I think it's really the minority of teachers, right? I think that our Pembroke teachers do an awesome job, the administration does an awesome job, but let's face it, we went through a pandemic and post-pandemic, and we've seen what's happened. We've seen what's happened. People have become so polarized, right? And to the point where we're afraid to talk, we're afraid to bring it up where we stand on issues in the community or, you know, with gatherings or in the workplace because we get automatically branded. And the point, the reason I'm bringing this up is that's our, the society, that's been put through the entire society now, and our kids are feeling it. Our kids are feeling it. And so when they come to a classroom and a teacher is, like I said, maybe it's the minority or marginally small amount that might wear their political view one way or the other on their shirt sleeve, the child is sometimes afraid to be themselves in their own skin in writing an essay or whatever because they feel like they're grayed, they won't get the attention that they want. That's an issue. That's an issue, and where that neutrality needs to take place. Everyone needs to feel safe. So if anything, you know, whether the policy or whatever, this is something that needs to be heard, right? For all of our kids to feel safe and not walk on eggshells like most of us do. They need to feel safe in that, you know, I saw, I was in a classroom when we had a parent-teacher conference, all are welcome here. All are welcome here. That made me so happy to see that and to feel that, that everybody is welcome there. And it wasn't identifying one group. What's that? I'm over, I'm over time.
Over, sorry.
So I just, I want to thank you, I want to thank you for, you know, giving everybody the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate all that the administration does. Thank you.
All right, so next on our list, Sandy Beaton, did she, did you want, oh wait, you wrote, do you want to come up? Okay, good.
Who's after Sandy?
After Sandy, we have people crossed out, Erin Dow, if you want to get behind the microphone after Sandy.
Thank you. I'm Sandy Beaton, I'm a parent of one of, I have a bunch of kids in the school system. You guys got my letter last night, and most of the students today articulated what I said in the letter way better than I did. But the only reason why I wanted to come back up is because, as I mentioned in the letter, and not everybody here knows this, I have a child who is a member of the LGBTQ community that had the worst year of his life this year, and it's actually one of those suicidal statistics that you guys spoke about today, okay? And the one thing that I failed to mention in my letter, and I feel really bad about this, is that every member of my child's educational team at the middle school came together to support my child and get him through this, and they did so 100% according to the current policy. They supported my child to get him completely through this. I have no clue, their personal viewpoints to this day, on my child's lifestyle as it truly should be, and the only thing they cared about was his development and his education and his well-being. And I'm so grateful for their support, and I'm very proud that they did exactly what you had asked of them.
Thank you, Sandy, that was... Okay, Erin?
Hi, I'm Erin Dow. I am a mother of two children in our school system. I did send an email, which you all received and read, on behalf of being against this policy, and I would just like to add the following. All affinity groups are meant to create a safe space for marginalized groups to come together and feel safe to talk about concerns, experiences, and issues they might be facing. Simply put, if you decide to allow this policy to advance and approve it, you are not only silencing a portion of our community, but you are also targeting a protected class. As an administrator, with over 20 years of educational leadership experience, I know that targeting a protected class opens the town up to potential litigation, a price tag that we should be putting toward things like teacher salary, we have some pretty amazing ones in this room right now. Spent tuition, educational enrichment, and student transportation, which I feel are much more important than a new policy that you are putting, trying to put through. Protected classes exist under the law, law that the school committee should know and were made aware of today by the American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts. We need to do better. You state that your policy, your proposed policy, is driven by a desire to eliminate all identity politics in the classroom while preserving the space for students to express their unique cultures, identities, and ideas. There is nothing political about identity. But when you pick and choose who you support, agree with, or allow, that is when it becomes identity politics, and this has absolutely no place in any of our classrooms. We need to rethink your proposed policy and give them, our students, this. Give all of our students a safe space to be heard. They are not asking for curriculum reform, they're just asking to exist without bias. Desi protects this group, the law protects this group, so why can't you protect this group?
We're well past the time.
I'm not done yet.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm almost done.
I'm sorry.
When you actively work against supporting students' voices and you actively work against what your supposedly stands for, your responsibility is to give power, give voices to those who are not heard or too afraid to speak up to be heard. That's advocacy. Somewhere along the way, we lost the civic responsibility. Identity politics have no place in our schools or this town.
Sorry, you're way past five minutes, we have to stop now. Thank you. Is your name on the list? Okay.
Thank you, Kathy. Your responsibility is to give power, give voices to those who are not heard or are too afraid to speak up to be heard. That is advocacy. Somewhere along the way, we lost the civic responsibility. Identity politics have no place in our schools or this town. I hope that you agree. As an elected leader, you have the responsibility to prevent this policy from moving forward in our schools in Pembroke. You ask for a solution, my personal suggestion, listen to your students, they're here, they've spoken up. Review, review the law and stay within it. Trust your teachers, they took these jobs and they're still in our system for a reason. And trust your administrators, you hired them and they're amazing individuals. Thank you.
All right, so we have, oh, we got another student. Okay, so just say your name and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cindy Junor. I am a high school junior, and I don't really want to discuss my opinion, of course I do have an opinion, but at the end of the day, I feel like none of us are recognizing that this is the student body's decision. We are the future. We should be able to choose what we want to say, and even what we don't want to say. That should be our choice, and that's all I have to say.
Very much, thank you. So what we're going to do right now, we have a couple more parents of current students that would like to speak, and additionally, we have a few residents of Pembroke that would like to speak as well. I want to take a maybe 10-minute break and then have everybody come back for a quick bathroom and drinks. Sorry, but I'm making a decision, we're taking a 10-minute break, and then we're going to come back to the table and we're going to come back to the microphone, so. It's...
8:57, call at 9 o'clock.
Yeah.
Be back at 9 o'clock.
8:57, we'll, just need people to be able to take a quick break.
of public comment. We've done an hour and I would really like to hear from as many of you as possible. So from this point forward, I'm going to be very strict on the two minutes. We've been, you know, going way over on all sides of the issue. I've allowed a generous extra portion and we can't do that anymore if everybody wants to speak. So with that said, we're going to start with, we still have, where are we? So we did, we did that. This one's done. Did the Normans, were they here?
They didn't want to.
They didn't want to, right? Okay. And then we start with, after the Normans, it will be Tracy Marino.
And I will definitely keep it under two minutes.
Thank you.
I think almost every rationale for opposing this proposal has been stated. I will not regurgitate those. Hopefully a slightly different angle. I volunteer or serve on the anti-bullying steering group for the district. To be clear, I am here in my personal capacity, not representing that steering group. But in terms of anti-bullying, there's kind of three ways, three perspectives from which to look at anti-bullying, three populations that you need to talk to and reach, an aggressor, a bystander, and a victim. When I arrived tonight, I did not have a prop, but thank you for the prop. And just thinking about anti-bullying from those three perspectives, to me, this is a really strong symbol to all three of those populations. To the aggressor, it says, maybe I shouldn't bully that kid. And to the victim, it says, maybe I have a safe space to report bullying or to just get support. And to the bystander, the same thing. Maybe I have a safe place and a good place to report a bullying incident. And that's it.
Thank you. Okay, Tracy Marino.
Good evening, school committee. This will be quick. I feel like most of my points have already been touched on. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a mom to five children, four who have already made their way through the Pembroke Public Schools, with one left in elementary school at Bryanville. Our family truly loves our schools and our teachers here in Pembroke, and we have done all we can to show that we support those. I have had an experience with an uncomfortable political activity in one of my children's classrooms that I don't want to share any details of. I have no need to. We just dealt with it ourselves. Because of this, I do think that the current policy needs some updating. Updating clarification regarding some boundaries and some further discussion. I know the school committee has already heard from me on this topic, and you actually already discussed tonight some of my suggestions, but a couple of the additions I would love to see would be to include not only the steps a family may take to navigate what to do if they do encounter an issue, also what a student's options would be to report an issue anonymously. Many of our families and especially our students are completely unaware that there is a means to do either of these things. Mostly, Patrick, I would like to reiterate your comments about Sue. I really feel the need to address the hateful comments that I have seen and heard being directed at the school committee chair. I have known Sue Ballinger in one capacity or another for many years. Before the school committee or the select board, we had connected as moms in and around town and continue to connect for multitude of reasons: PTO, CPAC, professional interactions, town events, et cetera. And I've had many, many conversations about our children, parenting, schools, community, and volunteerism over the years. Through these interactions, I have only known Sue to be a kind, gentle, caring member of our community who I know thinks that she is hoping to do what is best for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, we have John Lindolphy in Lindsey Newton.
Two minutes. I just wanted to say, a pride flag will not turn a child gay. It's not going to happen. But the community it represents can keep that same child safe when their parents may turn them away, which sadly happens. These kids are turned away, whether it's because of political reasons or religious reasons, and they're just not accepted by their family. And that safe space is important so that child does not become a statistic. It's, love is being politicized and it's wrong. And if your faith causes you to dislike a child because of their sexuality, you should look in your heart and not the flags on the wall. Forty seconds.
Thank you. I'm not going to keep it to 40 seconds, sorry. We'll try to keep it to two minutes. No, I have this all written out and I'm going to cut a substantial amount of it to try to respect everyone's time and what's already been said. So I am speaking to you tonight as a concerned parent, an experienced licensed educator, thank you all, and you're all in the other room too, as well as a mental health professional and an unwavering advocate for the LGBTQ community. So every decision that we make as a school system is meant in the best interest of children. I urge the school committee not to commit any time or resources toward the creation or revision of this proposed policy. People have already mentioned that it is broad and inequitable as far as the definition that is currently drafted. It politicizes an issue that to most are basic human rights and yet to a small amount of people are sadly somehow morally incorrect. It also, I'm trying to, trying to, um, thank you. The proposed goal of this policy revision, according to Sue Ballinger in the meeting, because I did read the transcript, it's creating equality and neutrality. Equal means the same for all. Striving for equality undermines public education's focus on appropriately supporting all learners. Learning cannot be equal for all wonderfully diverse students. It needs to be equitable, meaning each child gets what they need as an individual to be successful. In the same respects, neutrality does not create equality. It allows students in a majority group to continue being unaffected while leaving vulnerable students left unseen and underrepresented. How is that equal or neutral? This policy revision would inevitably negatively impact our most vulnerable and at-risk -- Five seconds. Five seconds? Sorry. Anybody want to donate their time? I've got a lot to say. All right, let me skip to the end there. If you as a school committee, I want you to ask yourselves these questions. Who in the community stands to gain by removing representation of human rights and marginalized groups? Those who do not belong to the marginalized groups? Those already in power who already see themselves represented in their school and in their society? What fears do these people hold over our children having a broader understanding of the world and its beautiful differences? Who may be negatively impacted and potentially harmed by the removal of such visual representation? Because representation is not advocacy. Thank you for, we're going to wrap it up, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. So if the school committee were to support a policy that purposefully bans representation of marginalized groups, what does that say to our children? Thank you very much. Do we value neutrality? Next up, we have, next up, we have Craig Spratt, and then after Craig, we have Janelle Carrionis Rice. Mr. Spratt?
I responded initially to a notice that I saw about the subcommittee meeting about the issue of social advocacy in the classroom. I had no idea that it had anything to do with the gay flag that's being waived. I responded just because of the issue of what to me was important, which is intellectual neutrality. I don't want to see teachers putting a spin on the ball in the classroom. And I think that that's something that's extremely pedagogically significant. And I think that, you know, I'm not in the ACLU, though I am an attorney here in Pembroke. And for example, I think the superintendent quoted Chapter 76, Section 5 at the meeting, "No person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town or obtaining the advantages, privileges, or courses of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation." If the pride flag or some other flag of advocacy, such as the Black Lives Matter flag, is not visible in the classroom, that does not exclude anybody from admission. That does not discriminate against anybody from obtaining the advantages, privileges, or courses of study on the grounds of their sexual orientation or their gender identity. It just doesn't, it just means that there's no flag on the wall. And it seems to me that when the flag is present, that the flag is in fact representing a point of view. And there are many ways in which, in which acceptance --
Tess, we're just slightly over, sorry.
-- can be, can be expressed without having a flag on the wall.
We have, we have to. Thank you very much, Mrs. Spratt. I appreciate your thoughts.
Hi, I am Dr. Janelle Carrionis Rice. I am a psychology professor at Northeastern University. I'm a psychologist to the LGBTQ plus community. I am a justice of the peace that primarily officiates LGBTQ weddings. But tonight, I think the most important role I have here, which has not been represented, is a gay parent to students in this school system. And to me, what I hear is that by taking this out of classrooms and schools, you are teaching my children to be ashamed of their parents and to not feel comfortable to share that they have same-sex parents. So that is the place that lots has been said, and I support all of that. But I want to remind everybody that this is not just about who the student is, but it's everything about their student life, their family, their culture. And by taking that out, you are not allowing for that representation. And I just want to end with a quote that I think speaks to a lot of what we've talked about here with this neutrality aspect. Too often, we idolize a middle stance as far more rational, more fair, and more loving. We wear it as its own kind of moral superiority. But virtue is not synonymous with neutrality. Sometimes integrity demands a choice. And the choice here should be to not have this policy changed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Molly, Molly Kyle, Kai, sorry. And then after that, we have Marielle McCann. Marielle, sorry, I said that wrong.
Hello, my name is Molly Kyle. I'm a parent of two young kids in the Pembroke Schools. It's hard to follow up after the students who did amazing tonight. That was a mic drop situation. I just wanted to add in that I grew up in the gay 90s, but it wasn't always a gay old time for my closeted friends who stayed in the closet until well after school. They feared coming out would bring them shame, exclusion, bullying, because they saw these consequences to peers that were out. They suffered from anxiety, depression, substance abuse, and suicidal thoughts. Speaking as a millennial mom trying to raise kind and accepting kids, all I care about is that my kids are happy and healthy. Every day, our children leave home in the morning, they have a pretty good chance of running into a pride flag or a thin blue line flag, so on and so on. Why are we sheltering the kids from the real world and not fostering healthy debate in the classroom? Regarding those who feel uncomfortable with the pride flag, I would say this is a fantastic, fantastic, teachable moment to learn about differences. The best growth comes in times of discomfort. It's 2024, and as Gen Z would say, this is cringe.
All right, I'm Marielle. I hate to follow them, but I have children in the school. I have them that have gone through the school systems. They are only comfortable coming out because they see those flags. We clearly are quite liberal at home. They're very comfortable at home. They're also telling us they're friends that are coming out to them but not at home. So they're giving them the resources to stay safe, stay off drugs, stay from keeping, from becoming suicidal, those sorts of things, because they're so aware of it. One thing that I have heard a lot about tonight is religion, and I'd like to remind everyone that the freedom of religion includes the freedom from religion. And don't push that on my kids.
I feel like some names have been skipped.
Yeah.
So I think we need to revise that, because I know that there are several people that were held up that were passing the merge, so.
So, so if you could just tell me the names real quick?
Alison Gray.
Alison Gray. Did we skip over Alison Gray? Okay. So I'm going to go, I'm going to go back to this. Tufford Dow was be first?
Yeah.
And Paige, I'll have you go. Let me just finish off this page and I'll have you go next. I know you got skipped also, so I'm going to, let me just have Tufford go, then we'll have Paige, and then we'll go to Gray, Alison Gray.
All right. I understand that LGBTQ plus issues make some people uncomfortable, and I want to make an important distinction between intellectual and physical discomfort. Being intellectually uncomfortable with competing ideas is also called critical thinking. It is a skill that students need to succeed in school and in life. It is our responsibility as adults to model critical thinking and intellectual discomfort and to encourage it in our children when they are confronted with complex ideas. This is a far cry from the kind of physical discomfort students feel when they are threatened, marginalized, and systemically disempowered by the very school system that is designed to make them feel safe and welcome. Simply legislating uncomfortable ideas out of our school system does no good and sets an alarming precedent that you can simply avoid issues you don't like and ignore people who live differently than you, the polar opposite of what a welcoming and friendly community like Pembroke should be. As members of a privileged class, we have a moral and legal obligation to support members of a protected class. It's not about elevating one group over another. It's not about what color your pin or your sticker or your flag is. It's about creating safe and welcoming space for those who are statistically most likely to be marginalized, ostracized, and bullied. Enacting a policy like this is not leading by example. It is an abdication of your responsibility to represent the best interests of the town and protect those whom most need it. Trust your teachers. Trust your administrators. They are the experts in the room.
Thank you.
I'm a little shorter. So my name is Alison Gray. I have a master's degree in higher education administration, and I've previously served in student services administration at Northwestern, the University of Chicago, and Harvard. Additionally, I have experience in staff development, leading workshops with education staff and on leaders on many topics, including unconscious bias. As someone with experience in student development, I grew very concerned when I heard the statements made by the school committee chair at last week's meeting. I sent Mrs. Ballinger and the school board an email to express my concerns. Ms. Ballinger replied and stated that she is advocating for students who may not feel heard or understood. She said that she had heard from students that felt hesitant to express themselves for fear of sounding homophobic. I'm not sure how this translates into creating a new policy. If this student or students have issues with the LGBTQ plus community and the clubs or symbols at school that show support for this group of students, perhaps a better course of action would be to connect them with a school counselor to discuss the views of the LGBTQ plus community and how to manage their feelings about this community. This divisive issue is unavoidable in today's schools. Thankfully, some of our students feel comfortable expressing who they are. So why is this proposed policy suggesting social advocacy be designated to a certain room in the school? That's akin to putting LGBTQ plus students back in the closet. Is this congruent with your plan to meet the emotional needs of our community? And In an email to me, Mrs. Bolinger stated that the concern is that some social advocacy groups seem elevated, and this is disturbing to the student she spoke with. This is a slippery slope, as we have all mentioned, that the school board should not get involved with. The proposed policy leaves the door wide open to put other groups supporting students in protective classes, such as Women in Engineering Club and the Latinas Latino Club. The school board revising our current policy is not the solution.
Just start to wrap up your pastime.
The tool, we have tools in our toolbox, such as engaging school counselors. And I really love what Patrick said about some of the revisions. But as a parent, just to conclude, I have serious concerns about the school board committee chair serving in this capacity, seeing that she has raised serious concerns about the politicalization of this committee.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, the time's way past. Next up is Paige Graziano.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am the parent of four children who've gone through Pembroke schools. One of my children identifies with this flag that we see here, and is a lot of the discussion this evening. And two of them spoke earlier about their reluctance to speak in class because they don't agree with the entirety of what that flag currently symbolizes. I would like to say I really appreciate Sue for bringing this issue up. There was a time when five or 10 gay, lesbian, et cetera types of students in a school were absolutely bullied to a point where they could not speak, and they reached out to other people and found advocacy there and were able to get respect and community. And that is absolutely the position of the school board, and I really respect Sue for being willing to stand up for people who didn't feel willing to stand up for themselves. And this display of discussion here is exactly what our government is designed to do. When the school committee can't come to an agreement, it should come to the people for open discussion. I think we all need open discussion. We need diversity of ideas, and our students need to be critically challenged to think about both sides of an issue. And if my child wants to say in a class where we are discussing gay and lesbian rights, and cis and straight issues, et cetera, they should absolutely be able to say, "I believe that a man is born a man, and a woman is born a woman." And that should be able to be discussed. I'm not saying anyone has to agree with it. I'm not saying that anyone deserves to be disrespected, and that my kids should be able to say that you have less of a voice because you disagree with them. But everyone should have a voice. And my daughter, who identifies with this flag, with this LGBTQ flag, she absolutely should never be bullied. She should never be discriminated against and kept from speaking her truth. This is a free country, and our schools should allow students to speak about divisive ideas and issues, but their teachers should remain neutral. When I teach, I ask questions, no matter what position the student says to me. If a student tells me they should eat candy for breakfast, I say, "Let's talk about that." If a student tells me candy for breakfast is stupid, I say, "Let's talk about that." That's what I'm asking for in this school, and I appreciate your efforts, Sue. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paige. Is there an Erin Petty? I apologize for butchering your name. And then after Erin, we are going to go to Chris, no, I'm sorry, Monica Lovstead-Frank? Do we already? She's it. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much for your time tonight. This is not easy work, and it's important work. The first thing I want to say, I'm definitely going to keep it under two minutes, is that for the students who spoke tonight, I have a first grader and a fifth grader in Hobumuck right now. And you wonder, I didn't grow up here. I grew up on the North Shore. My husband grew up here. And I loved my high school in the North Shore. I have so much faith and excitement. I have so much hope, and I have so much respect for the young people who spoke tonight. As a mom, knowing that my kids could follow in your footsteps just makes me feel good, and I'm very grateful to you. That's just the first thing. Secondly, I just, everything's been said, but I just, we kind of are circling around this idea of neutrality. And I wonder if there's an awareness or not an awareness that by making this move, it is wildly not neutral. It is a big move. It is a newsworthy move. It is a, could you be on the Boston Globe move? It is, it is a move that says, "We have something that keeps kids safe, and we're going to take it away." That's not neutral. That is a big move. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Who is next? Monica?
My sister.
She, okay, perfect. And then after Monica, we are going to have Cristiano.
Hi, Monica. Here standing for my kids. A lot of what I'm going to say, or was going to say, has been said. But I wanted to bring up a couple points. Who someone is isn't a choice or political. And a symbol that represents acceptance of everyone doesn't elevate them over anyone else. It says they accept everyone. Advocacy is arguing for, or speaking out of, and having a sticker on a door doesn't seem to meet that criteria to me. It just says, "This place is safe." When they see that symbol, they can feel a little bit like they don't have a better chance of not being seen as wrong or less than. Again, back to the neutral, neutral's not equal. We're not all running the same race. There are people that are starting a lot further back with people screaming and yelling and throwing things at them and throwing hurdles in their way. So to say that you're going to make it neutral, that just leaves everybody there way in the dust without even a chance. So, I mean, just trying to bring it up to... My last point is, I'm going right out of my brain, but I just, I just want to say that, again, it is who you are. It is not, it's not a choice. Your politics are a choice. Your religion is a choice. Who you are is not.
Thank you so much. And I just want to remind people, if, you know, I'm going to continue to call, we have about 10 minutes left. Really, it's a little bit less, but we'll just say 10 minutes to be even. If you have heard already the argument, if you don't have anything new to add, I would just hope that you would let other people who really want to speak that have something new to add, have something to say, and just try to keep it to two minutes. And that was great, because that was way under. Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, I'll shoot for that. I got to say, I'm not surprised that we're here tonight, because a year and a half ago, our town banned a DEI committee. And I think a lot of that happened under our noses. Some have said that if we take this policy, it'll be the first step in a slippery slope. And I think that we're actually on that slope already. Many of the, not many, some of the members of our select board, our school committee, were swept into office on the coattails of that. And they viewed that, they viewed that as a mandate to bring these kinds of culture wars to Town Hall into our schools. I hope tonight shows them that that was a severe miscalculation. When this meeting started, there were far more people here than I've seen at most annual town meetings, way more than have probably ever been at a school committee meeting. So I think we're sending a pretty clear message here. I think this has opened many eyes in this town. For those who know me probably know what I'm going to say next, and that's, I hope this shows to us how important it is to vote in local elections. Chairman Bolinger, I believe I've heard you say that if the town did not support this policy, you would abandon it. And I hope that you stay true to that word.
Thank you. Moving on to Rachel Kilnap. And then after Rachel is Kathy Burke Southworth?
I gave up.
Oh, you gave up your time. Okay. And then after that is Avon Moran.
I'm back.
Okay, great. Then Arshambolt?
I'm back.
Okay. And then John Conatton? So you're right after Rachel.
So I had a long thing prepared, and I kept shortening it over and over. My name is Rachel Kilnap. I'm an educator. Two of my kids came through this school, and I'm a teacher. Well, I'm an educator. What I had prepared was really talked about balance and trusting your teachers to have balance in the classroom, and trusting that the walls in the classroom represent the student body. Because I'll tell you, my books don't, because the canon, no offense, white guys, but my canon is dead white men who are presumed heterosexual. So I'm just trying to put up posters by Maya Angelou, Toni Morrison, by, you know, the pride flag, the peace flag, the rainbow. I'm just trying to represent many voices in my room. And I would imagine most of the English teachers are trying to do the same in their rooms. So I'll digress from the long speech about what's in my classroom and trying to provide balance. I need to ask a couple questions. Where is this coming from? Like, where does this policy coming from? Where is the data? My superintendent likes data. Amanda, he liked data. He wants to know how my kids are doing on the MCAS, what I'm doing to improve their score. Where is the data on this? How many kids have come forward? Teachers should not be teaching their political views or supporting a candidate. They shouldn't. How many teachers have been disciplined with the policy that we already have? I'd like to know that number. I'd also like to know that if, have you asked these kids in an anonymous poll what they think? Is the pride flag upsetting them? Are their teachers upsetting them or discussions? And then, and then let's have a conversation about the polling of the kids and what the kids think. And I want you to trust us as educators. I know my town trusts me, and when I look at this policy, I think it's unintentional. It screams that you don't trust teachers. And, thank you. I trust Superintendent Obi. I trust Principal Talbot and the other administrators. I trust these teachers. I trust these kids. I think you need to go, you need to do some more research, and you need to find some data, and you need to really figure out how to help these kids, how to help our community, how to solve this together and provide balance.
Thank you very much. And after John, we have Samuel. Okay, thank you.
So in support of data, when I prepared for coming to speak to this meeting, there are two great reports that are out there. One, Glessen School Climate for LGBTQ plus Students in Massachusetts, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Commission on LGBTQ Youth Report and Recommendations. 215 pages of information out there on Massachusetts. So when you look at the markers for risk behavior for all of those students, LGBTQ students are at two times or greater risk for those behaviors. Includes bullying, skipping school, we've talked about suicide, attempting suicide, bullied electronically, been in physical fights, two times and greater for LGBTQ students over non-LGBTQ students. So what I would like to see is the school committee focus on the drive, why we have a flag in the classroom. We shouldn't need one. There shouldn't even be one. It shouldn't be necessary. So when I looked at this, I asked, "Why do we even have one in there?" Because the greatest impact on reversing or impacting those numbers is when you have support at home and at school. That has the greatest impact to reduce those numbers. So that's why the flag is there. So I want to support you by saying, "No, we don't need a flag in the classroom." I will support that when these numbers don't exist, when these kids aren't in those situations. And I just want to echo what Chris said. You did say that if you heard from the community, you would step back from this policy. I think you've heard from the students, the teachers, the residents, the parents of this community, so.
Thank you, John.
Hi, everyone. So I'm Sam Idlin. I am the physics teacher at the high school, but I am not speaking as a teacher right now. I'm a resident of this town. I was born here. I was raised here. I'm a product of this school, with all that entails. I was taught critical thinking by people that are now, I am now proud to call colleagues. I don't see what you think you see. I have lived through it. I've seen it from the student's eye, and I've seen it from the teacher's eye. More importantly, I sense dangerous rhetoric in what I have heard tonight. Coming from certain people, coming from the chair of this committee, I heard comments that could be interpreted as antisemitism. I have heard comments that can be interpreted as anti what we stand for in this school. I heard you said there were different levels of Jewish faith.
I meant to say religious. My apologies.
I don't really care, ma'am, frankly.
Well, I can apologize.
I can, and I think she's not too accepting. My grandmother didn't go to Auschwitz and Birkenau, to be disrespected. My great-grandparents did not die in Dachau, the first concentration camp, to hear that. And someone that espouses that rhetoric, even incidentally, shows a vast, deep moral irresponsibility with what they're trying to say in a very, very sensitive topic. That's all I have to say. Everything else has been said by the chair.
Thank you. Moving on to Max Cross and Sam and Sarah McKenna are on the list as well.
Hi, how's it going? Anyway, I'm Max Cross. I have two kids in the system, one in pre-K at North Pembroke and a first grader at Hobumuck. And this is my first time at one of these committees. I just, I heard a lot of things stirring up, a lot of energies getting stirred up. And, yeah, this is definitely a popular topic. You know, I went to college, Emerson College, where I was just surrounded by a lot of theater students, so, you know. I got to definitely mention that the members of the LGBTQ plus whole society are some of my absolute favorite people. And I just wanted to reiterate one of the points that Alison was saying, that I thought was an interesting point to kind of rehash, that if this policy were to be changed, that this might put like a target on the back of our school system and might make the news in a negative light. And I just, you know, with everything that's going on with policy changes and budget plans and stuff like that, I think a negative thing to make a blip for Pembroke would be definitely a bad thing. And, you know, when I went to school for public speaking, they say, you know, the number one thing is to read the room. And I think the room has been hopefully heard loud and clear that the policy should change, should not change and stay as is. So that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Quick question. If somebody wasn't on the list and you wanted to talk, could they just?
You know what? I skipped over whole first page, and I'm not sure we're going to get to additional people. So I actually believe that Don Bryant is up next. So my apologies. So have Don Bryant go, and then after that?
Sam McKenna.
And Sam McKenna will be going right now.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Don Bryant. I live on Mountain Avenue. And hello, everybody, and glad everyone got the opportunity to express their thoughts. And I want to thank the school committee for inviting us to do that tonight. That's extraordinarily important. To quote Patrick Chilcott, yeah, here we are again, right? Two and a half years later, or two years later. "Two years ago, the town resoundingly spoke against the presence of a misconstrual of what DEI meant and its value system and its place in town governance and institutions." We did that- We did that as a town. There were aggressive and continual accusations by those in authority, in-town governance, against our citizens. Public accusations that they were racist, that they were homophobes, that our town was unwelcoming. Well, we know where that went, and where it went was the town said to the DEI committee, this is finished. We reject this way of approaching our town. The school happens to be in the same zip code of the people who made that decision. And maybe some of the comments tonight are perhaps maybe unaware of that, even in light of maybe some of the overwhelming view of one side or the other, there's a whole community out there to which we are called to account, where people are living out their lives, making their living, building their homes, educating their children. Could anyone meaningfully believe that the overwhelming expressed convictions and values of Pembroke residents two years ago have no implications for the culture and education of our children? Of course they do. Is that time?
Yes, it is. Sorry.
Thank you for the...
Let him finish.
Finish your thought, and we have to move on.
Okay. Our eyes are cast to the school with concerns that those same atmospheres are perhaps seeping into our schools that were already there. The policy...
All right, let him just wrap it up.
Let him finish. We've let everybody else finish.
Just, hey, we're going, we are going to be fair. We are going to be fair. We are going to be neutral, which is what we're talking about. But, Don, wrap it up.
I speak in support of Sue Bollinger's resolution for it guides teachers and staff in unknowingly, maybe carelessly for some, maybe even intentionally, from becoming carriers of a message that carries into the classroom that not all opinions are invited.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Sam McKenna.
Hi, my name is Samantha McKenna. I graduated from the high school last year, and I'm currently a student at UMass Amherst, where there are currently a lot of controversial issues being presented, if you've heard anything about them. I have learned in my short time there so far that nothing will change if the people being affected, in this case, the students, do not speak for themselves. Throughout my time in the Pembroke Public Schools, I participated in days where we wore pride pins along with other colors to support different communities. It was small things like these days that helped me to feel comfortable and welcome in the school system, especially while growing up and exploring my own identity. I know for a fact that not allowing any sort of advocacy decorations, along with any other things, would make students feel unsafe and unwelcome, which is exactly what we do not want in any of our schools. Being around pride flags along with other advocacy flags or banners has no effect on learning whatsoever. Limiting students' expressions of themselves will truly affect them for the rest of their lives, as these valuable years have major effects on them. I know that in my years in this school system, they would have been miserable if I had to follow the ridiculous and disgusting policy being presented right now.
Thank you. So before we move on to Sarah, I just want to ask, we're well beyond the 90 minutes, and I am going to leave it up to my committee and the administrators, because it has been a very long night. How much...
So my recommendation, because you called Sarah, would be to let's...
Yes, absolutely. Sarah.
Did you guys hear parents at school before you dropped the word "parents"?
No, we did.
We finished the parents.
So here's what we're going to recommend, right? So we have really done our best to be very fair with this. We did kids, we did parents, we did community members. Why don't, if there are two, I only saw two hands, because otherwise, we're going to be here, it'll be midnight and we'll get kicked out. We have two more people. It's entirely up to you who those people are. If there are two parents that want to speak, get up to, go on up to the microphone. So how many people are left? All right, we'll do, go ahead. Come up to the microphone.
It's about...
We'll do, we're going to do these three, and then we're going to wrap it, because we actually still have to have a conversation. So ladies first.
Okay, please.
My name's Tara Kelly. I am a parent of a student here at the high school, and my list of everything I was going to say was already said. So I'm going to say one thing. If you ban the pride flag today, what are you going to attempt to ban tomorrow?
We called you first.
My name is Allegra Cullen. I have two children in this school, and I do feel like I have a perspective that hasn't been spoken yet tonight. I have a biracial child, and I have a child who has a disability, and I believe those children need to feel welcome, as well as children who may not be on the gender spectrum. If we talk about representation, cisgender, white male, Judeo-Christian are the people who are represented everywhere in most of our books, most of our teachings, most of our understanding throughout history. Not my child who can't hear or who has an intellectual disability. Not my child who is biracial and adopted and has gone through trauma. That's not what we see. We see people who look like us, and we don't deserve that in this town. We deserve to DEIB, belonging. We all deserve to feel like we belong, and I do not agree with changing this. I don't want people who, I don't want anybody to feel like they don't belong, and I do not agree with this, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Charlie Janham. I live on Edgewater Drive, and I'm a parent. Three of my kids went through this school system. Listen, I'm wearing this hat. I don't see anybody else wearing the flag. This represents everybody, including the pride people. This represents everybody. I've been insulted because I'm an all-white guy here tonight, okay? But I let it go, that's fine. But what I like to say is this flag covers everybody. This is a safe space. This building is for education, not advocacy. Not advocacy. This is a safe space. I'm a safe space. Do you see a guy with a hat with an American flag? I don't care. Listen...
Let him speak.
I'm a safe space. If you feel threatened, you come to me. I will defend you. I don't care who you are. I don't care. You're a human being. It doesn't matter, right? I'm an old white guy? You think that's what you see? You don't know anything about me. I'm just saying, we don't need, this woman said, what's going to be banned next? If you let this flag, what next flag? We see Palestine flags? Forget about it. Forget about it.
All right, all right, all right.
That's enough.
Those people are disgusting.
That's wrap it. All right, enough. You're off.
See, you're the oldest people that protest.
All right, enough. Enough. Enough! Go ahead, Sue.
Okay, so I think we've heard from as many people as possible, everybody...
Can I say one? Can I go to the mic? Because I was actually one of the people that helped start the GSI.
No, I think, I do think, we're going to wrap it up. I appreciate, I do appreciate it.
We asked everybody.
We're going to wrap it up.
We asked everybody, and, no, we're...
We're moving on.
Okay, let's just take a quick vote. But I was on the parent list, but it wasn't called, but that's okay.
It wasn't intentional, but again, we've done our best to be very, very fair here, to hear from a wide and a very diverse group of people with a wide and very diverse viewpoint, right? So we are going to move on, because we still have a discussion to have. Go ahead, Sue.
Okay, so, moving on, let me go back to the agenda here. So let's have a discussion regarding whether or not we feel there's any kind of a need or any comments or questions, and I'm going to start with Allison.
I would like to ask, Mr. Talbot, I know I asked you some questions at the Policy Subcommittee that, for whatever reason, didn't get answered. So I was wondering if you could answer some of those questions about some of the data about surrounding issues that have been brought up or not brought up.
Sure. I suppose the most important data point for me is the number of complaints that I have had as a building principal here for eight years about advocacy in the classroom. And the answer is, I've had not a single complaint from a student in eight years about any of it. I have had two complaints from parents over eight years, and two is more than zero, but it's two. And so I consider those numbers to be manageable from my end. I fully understand, and I've been teaching kids for 30 years, right? So I do also get adolescent child development, and I also get that there are students who are by nature reluctant to come to adults with their concerns. But I know that a lot of them aren't, and in eight years, there has not been a complaint in my office, in a teacher's classroom, in a guidance council's office, in the adjustment council's office, in my assistant principal's office, not one. And so while I am sure, while I am sure that there are students who are reluctant, I think that another member of the audience said it very well earlier, we have to support those kids and teach them how to come forward. We have to support them to have those difficult conversations. I am wildly proud of the students in this audience. I am so proud to be your principal. Lauren, that includes you. But the fact that two of them referenced this vision of the graduate has got me just celebrating like you would not believe here, my own self. This vision of the graduate is loaded with prompts that kind of address this issue, right? We do, we are responsible for, this is in our handbook, this was approved by our committee here, right? We are measuring how well our students embrace diversity and leverage their power to advocate for those in need. That's in this document. We are responsible for providing examples for kids to demonstrate an ability to build positive relationships while working effectively and respectfully with others on shared tasks, even if they don't think the way we do, right? We are responsible for helping our students demonstrate a resilience, right, to think critically and analyze information in a sea of information that might not always be pleasing to them, right? That's what this document says. And I just can't imagine the impact of this document one year from now, when NEAS comes in here, and our kids are saying, well, we really can't embrace diversity and advocate for those in need because we've taken away those flags. I have data here. I do apologize for rambling on, but thank you for asking the question. And Mrs. Kielnap, I appreciate you for asking the question. I do have survey data here from our students. We did survey our students 18 months ago as part of our NEAS accreditation. People like me feel welcome. That's what we asked our students. Now, it's a five-point rating scale, right? Everything from never, right, and five is all the time, right? So 72% of our students feel welcome most or all the time. Most or all the time. And when you throw in that middle ground, when you throw in that middle ground of some most or all the time, it's 90% of our students are telling me that they feel welcome in our building. Silas Bell advocated for that beautifully here today in this meeting. I feel safe. That's a question we asked our kids. I feel safe. 73% said all the time. When you add in that middle ground, it's 92%. I feel safe. This is including the kids who perhaps are not part of the LGBTQ+ community and are looking at that flag. I trust the teachers even if I don't have them, and this goes to the point of kids not coming forward, right? I trust the teachers even if I don't have them. 86% of our kids say they trust our teachers even if they don't have them. I feel valued. 86% of our kids say I feel valued. I have at least one adult who trusts, or I trust, one adult that I trust and can therefore go to with problems. 92% of our kids. And so when the question is brought to this group, and I'm not part of the committee, and I apologize if I'm reaching, but where did this come from? I don't know. I don't know. I'm a data-driven guy. I'm evaluated by my boss on how well I use data to make decisions, and the data is just not backing it up.
So the last thing I'll say is I absolutely think this needs to end tonight. This is done, in my opinion.
Okay, Mike?
Sorry. So on Monday, I spoke with our attorney. I had a lot of questions I wanted to ask him to find out, you know, talk a little bit about Sue's, it's not a proposal, I consider it more of somewhat of a framework. When I asked him about it, what, I asked him, what's the likelihood we'd get sued if we did something like that? He said, very high. I said, how long would these lawsuits, I said, how long would these lawsuits last? He said, one or two years if they were quick. I said, how much money could we be liable for? And his answer, I know Patrick gave an answer, but my, his answer to me was tens of thousands. I don't know if he was just speaking rhetorically, or that was the case. But, so to me, first of all, I don't think your policy was about trying to ban the pride flag. I think that's something that just got put on social media. I think your policy, what you're trying to do is to bring back neutrality. First of all, the policy that I consider a framework, because it was the beginning of a talk, the beginning of a discussion. You start out here, someone starts here, you end up somewhere in the middle. And that's what I was kind of hoping that we'd get. But what I would be willing to do, I don't, obviously, I don't believe in going towards that, towards that framework all that much. I think, you know, that we have too much liability, both legally, which would then turn into financial liability, and as I said in my opening remarks, we have to think of what's legal as well, and it would put us, it would really put us on the hook. Like, we could be, do we want to spend the next two or three years talking about lawsuits? I want to come to school committee and get stuff done. Like, I want to get the VOTEC thing resolved. What I would be willing to do, I said, I would think, is Tracy had mentioned something, because, who, is it, Cora and, I'm sorry, I forget the names.
Ivy.
Ivy. They spoke and said that they don't feel like they're heard. So to me, that means all of us, school committee, you know, superintendent, I think, you know, staff needs to be more aware of that, and we need to, we haven't done enough to reach out to those students to let them know that they can be heard. We have a couple of different policies. If we were to pursue something along the lines of a social advocacy or what have you, I would, I would take the existing policies we have, the controversial issues, I don't, maybe the staff participation and political activities, not sure, and which, to me, I think was just basically restated, the state...
The law.
Yeah. I would go with those. I would add something about how to, how they can, how students can report, or parents can report this stuff anonymously, as well as the procedure that we have to escalate everything, and go from there. And I'd like, if we were to vote this to move, that's what I would like to see. I just think that if this was turning into, if we were going to go down the road of banning stuff, it's, it's just, the liability legally is too much, and I'd rather, the money that we would spend on attorneys, the time we would spend on lawsuits, I'd rather be putting that back into, back into the community.
Thank you. So I think it's really important for us to take about four steps back. We have a policy, right? So I heard a lot about, oh, we're trying to be neutral, or we're trying to do this, we're trying, no, we have a policy that does that today, right? Again, can't stress enough, the teacher's right to introduce controversial issues in the classroom does not include the right to advocacy. That is today's policy. Teachers...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's what I'm... My point is that people don't seem to be aware of that, which is what we need to...
No, I understand that, though, right? So teachers are to refrain from using their position to express partisan points of view. That is today's policy. So again, I'm going to kind of quickly regurgitate what I said at the beginning. We have a policy in place. It works. It seems to be working. It seems to address everything that every single person... It seems to address everything that every single person here said tonight. So I don't know why we need a new policy. Now, I did hear, "Well, this policy isn't being enforced." So it is counterintuitive, and it is illogical to say, "Well, because this policy isn't being enforced, we need a broad-sweeping new policy that then won't be enforced," right? So the question becomes, if something's not being enforced, what happens, right? And I think we gave the escalation policy for that. I do think it's important that kids know that they can raise concerns anonymously, and that they won't be targeted, because remember what I said at the beginning? All kids matter. All of them. So I do think putting that in, I think it's a good idea. I think putting the escalation protocol into the existing policy, good idea. That doesn't take a vote. That's what policy does. It's the work they do. They haven't done IMB, or if you have, it hasn't come to the full committee yet. So I just think we do the work that we do. There's absolutely no need to move forward, and Allison, I agree, this has to end tonight.
So I promise this is it. So a lot of what I feel like I'm hearing around this table is that this is a communication issue and not a policy issue.
I agree. It seems to be.
Fair enough. So I, you know, still, first of all, I don't, I don't want to elevate this. I mean, clearly, I have a differing viewpoint on this than many of you. I absolutely appreciate the kids not, I don't want to take any of those rights away from the kids, and I never did. I want the kids to be able to advocate for, you know, like, be able to have a pride flag in the common areas of the schools, not just like a bulletin board, but the, you know, common areas, rather than in the actual classrooms. I just feel like any, like, when we walked through the schools, I saw other advocacy, not just the pride flag. There was, like, several other things, and I think that we need to address that. I do know of at least three complaints that were brought forward regarding staff handing pins and stickers and things to students on various awareness days, so I kind of disagree with that. And also, 73% feel safe, but that means that 27 don't. So that's concerning, that we need a higher number than that. I'm not happy with that number. I'd like to see it higher.
And I think that's something, though, that we should strive for, right? I mean, I think it's the right thing to strive for. There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I want to see it higher. So while my policy is lacking, my policy framework and the ideas that I placed in there are lacking, and I, you know, hearing from the community, you know, it's, some of the ideas in there, like, really wouldn't work, and I would not want to put, my intention really wasn't for teachers have to out themselves or anything like that. I just wanted, you know, people to be able to express their, their identity that's dear to them. And so it was meant to do in love, not hate. It was meant to do, to give teachers the option, like, maybe, you know, like, all of it needs sort of a conversation, right? You know, can you put the pride pin on your purse? Well, you know, that, you know, I think that's reasonable. Like, you know, somebody should be able to, like, have a personal identity.
So, so hold on, though. I don't, I don't want to rehash kind of what we went through with Policy Subcommittee and everything else. I think that the ultimate question that I think we have to figure out is, and the question that's being asked on the agenda is, do we need a new policy? Every single thing, hold on, do...
Need to talk, if that's okay.
Do we need a new policy? I think our existing policy addresses all of these things. I don't, I don't, I don't even get it.
So let me just, let me just go back, let me just go back, okay? In a hearing, I just want to finish my thought, and then you can, like, you know, tear apart whatever I have to say.
I would never do that.
Yeah. So my point is that, you know, I think that, can we use the current policy is, is the question. Do we need to add anything to it? You know, clearly, we have to put some sort of safety for kids who don't feel hurt and are afraid to say anything, so I definitely think having an anonymous feature is really important, and a way forward.
Say it again, Allison.
We have Titan Talks for anonymous reporting.
But kids don't understand that, and we need to make it clear.
I've been told that this is talked about in Titan Time and 21st Century Skills, so that's disingenuous to say that, that they don't know, they're told.
Disingenuous is really not a really nice term.
We have been told by where Titan Talks has been talked about, I mean, at our Policy Subcommittee.
That's what the superintendent addressed. That component.
It's really rare that I don't have to speak at all.
We're doing the job.
So I think, we listened to the Subcommittee recording, heard what you said. The way that we govern our work here is by, what is the student learning problem that I'm solving for? What I heard tonight was an inability to articulate a problem, so then we're left with, what are we solving for? I hear what you're saying, I inherently trust our staff that we have here, we have amazing educators, you saw that tonight, we have amazing students, we have amazing parents, and we have amazing residents. What needs to happen, and I think what Allison and Mike and Patrick and even Sue are saying is that we need to do a better job telling kids how to report, we need to do a better job explaining to families that they have options. I have been here for 14 years, I've been the superintendent for nine years, I've heard from two parents in nine years in relation to advocacy. Each of those instances were dealt with using our current policy. It's fair to say that, on face value, some people may say it's difficult to find the superintendent. You all find me, you find me all the time. You know where I am, and you know how to get me. I get emails about kindergarten math problems, I get emails about bus stops. I got 1,000 emails today about why there was even school. So folks know how to find me. We are here, we want to hear from you. If something is happening in your kid's classroom, or you hear of something, let us know. You know, it's hard for us to enforce a policy if you're not telling us what's going on. We are here, we work for you. I know we shouldn't say that to us, but we do work for you. We are here to advocate for you and for your, and what you need. I think really articulating what... To be added to IMB, but I don't think we need to.
But I didn't know exactly if we need a new policy, so...
So the real question becomes, I mean, like, we've, we can talk around again and again and again, I think we talked it to death. Do you want to make a motion? That's the question.
I'm not going to, there's no point in making a motion, because I think we've already...
Okay. So, but I want something on the record, because I don't want this, I don't want in five or six months, this coming back all over again, right? So Natalie, if you would just make sure this gets in the record, the school committee did not take a motion or a vote. And I actually wonder if we should. I actually, I mean, you had something written down, you want to make just...
But I said possible for a reason. The three of you have already decided no, and I already said...
But I think, how to find a vote?
I already said publicly that I would, if everybody said they weren't going to move forward...
So I'm going to make a motion, right? And I'm going to make the motion in a very specific way. So the motion is to direct the Policy Subcommittee to review or create a new policy regarding political, social advocacy in the classroom. No, no, there's a reason I am making that motion, so...
So with no second?
Allison?
No. So with no second, then the motion dies.
If we make this motion and it fails, it goes on record and it's dead, which is why I'm making the motion in the way that I'm making the motion. And if there is a surprise, and it is a tie, it still fails. So if we make a motion and second it, and it is 2-2, or it is 3-1, it still fails and it still dies. That is why I am doing this. I would respectfully resubmit the motion and ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So the motion on the table is to create a new policy, and I think, given the fact that this has been so vocal and so upfront, we should do it by roll call vote. Allison?
No.
Sue?
No.
Mike?
No.
And I'm a no. It's unanimous and it's over. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All right, we've adjourned.
Thank you.